Okay, so I have seven o'clock. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order this meeting of the twentieth of May twenty twenty one, City National Planning Board. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Donches? Mike Peterson?
President, home alone.
Scott Leclair?
Here and alone.
Adam Varley? Maggie Harper? Alderman David Tenza? Alterwoman Jan Schmidt? Anne Hudson?
President alone?
Ed Weber?
Present and alone.
Bob Ballinger?
Here and alone.
Larry Hirsch?
Here and alone.
All right, and we have a quorum.
Okay, great. I'm gonna go ahead and read the introductory statement. So again, my name is Scott Leclair. I'm the Chair of the City National Planning Board, and again, this is the twentieth of May twenty twenty one Planning Board meeting. As Chair of the Board, I find that due to the state emergency declared by Governor Sununu as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number Twelve pursuant to Executive Order twenty twenty dash zero four, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note there's no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which is authorized to meet electronically pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the order, I am confirming that, one, we're providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. When we are video conferencing using Zoom, public access to the meeting is provided via Zoom, and a link to the meeting is contained in the meeting agenda available on the city's website. Excuse me, the meeting can also be streamed to the city's website at www.nashvillenh.gov front slash three one eight, front slash CTV on Nashville's community link. Two, we're providing public notice and necessary information for accessing the meeting. Three, if anyone has any problem accessing the meeting, please call six zero three five eight nine three one one five, and they'll help you connect. Four, in the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods I mentioned, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. In control of the meeting, and to an extent practical and advisable, the Board will follow the procedures identified in its bylaws. First, the applicant will present their case, followed by questions by the Board. We'll allow for a rebuttal period as best as possible for persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or oppositions before the Board delivers and determines. We have some unmuted folks on here, can?
I'm muting them right now.
Okay, thanks. Applicants, they're representatives and individuals required to appear before the Board are appearing remotely, and they're not required to be physically present. Applicants, they're representatives and individuals required to appear before the Board may have contacted the Planning Department to arrange alternative means of real-time participation if unable to use Zoom. Please note that all votes taken during this meeting will be done by a roll call vote. The Board meetings will be held electronically until it's been deemed safe to conduct more typical meetings at City Hall. The Board, the Planning Department, and the city thank everybody for their understanding and patience. Okay, so first up on the agenda, I did want to go through the approval of some minutes in the packet. We have first a set of minutes from the May fourth twenty twenty one site walk. Anybody from the Board had a chance to take a look at those minutes and want to make a motion as to whether they can be approved as written?
So move, Mr. Chair?
Alright, so a motion by Mr. Ballinger to approve the May fourth site walk minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? Okay, can we get a roll vote on that?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Epstein?
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes five to zero with one extension.
Okay, great. Next up, we have minutes from the May sixth twenty twenty one meeting. Anybody had a chance to take a look at these minutes and want to make a motion as to whether they can be accepted as written or need amendments?
I approve that they be accepted.
Motion by Mr. Hirsch to accept the minutes from May sixth meeting as written. Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion? Okay, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes six to zero.
Okay, great. Next up on the agenda, Communications?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. I'm gonna quickly go through the items that were emailed out to you yesterday. First up was regarding West Glenwood. You should have received an amended staff report, a letter from Peter Matson dated May eighteenth with some stormwater reports and updated plans. You should have also received regarding four fifty-two Amherst Street Cumberland Farms, some building elevations. Five, seven, nine, eleven Domain Avenue, a letter from Chuck Ritchie, Fieldstone Land Consultants. It's a response letter to some engineering comments. For Blackstone Drive, there was an email from Joe Mandola dated May eighteenth that all engineering comments have been addressed. And finally, there was a memo from Matt Sullivan dated May nineteenth regarding other business number six, which is an amendment to the capital improvements program, and that's all that I have.
Okay. All right, so.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one item of additional communication, albeit not included in the packet you received yesterday. We will be obviously discussing five referral items as shown, or rather, four referral items as shown on the agenda this evening. Additionally, I'd like to request, once you do discuss those referral items, modification of the agenda to add a fifth referral item relative to Resolution R twenty-one one thirty-five, which is related to the authorization of a First Amendment to a purchase and sale agreement for real property at one forty-one Burke Street. This is a time-sensitive referral that, quite frankly, was the casualty of a miscommunication on the city side of things, and we offer our apologies for that. However, we do have Mr. Tim Cummings who's available to address that, who will also be addressing other business number five. So I'd ask that, once you do discuss the referrals, that you make a motion to amend the agenda to add the consideration of Resolution R twenty-one one thirty-five. I understand you don't have information in front of you, but I believe that Mr. Cummings or Director Cummings will be available to discuss that resolution in detail with you.
Okay. All right, so taking a look at the the next up item on the agenda, Report of Committee and Liaison. Anything in?
Yes, we had a HTC meeting. Matt was there with great input, and we just talked about how the HTC and stuff like that is with the imagine, you know, with the master plan. And so we had information and ongoing, actually, information we're gonna have. So, thank you.
Okay. Thanks for that, Ed.
That it?
Yeah.
Next up on our agenda is moving into the business here, and I'm gonna, for the sake of this meeting, because there's a lot of different things going on tonight, and I'll get some feedback from Mr. Sullivan here from planning. But we're going to, we're gonna take the referrals from the city, which are items two through five on the other business with the additional referral here at the front, so that we can release that group to move on to the next sort of time-sensitive meetings. So that's gonna be the first thing on the agenda tonight. We're gonna move into old business. Matt, can you summarize for the Board the intent of old business for the three items entitled the landing in Nashville? How we would, what's the intent for this meeting?
Yes, absolutely, Mr. Chair, and thank you for asking. I think it will provide some clarification for folks who might be on listening as well. The three national landing applications have been carried forward to this agenda for consideration by the Board. As you're aware, we've been in the process of reviewing the Hoyle Tanner Associates' third-party review of both stormwater and traffic reports for that project. It's been an ongoing review and modification process, both between Hoyle Tanner and the city, to ensure that that third-party review is reflective of the city's perspective on the project, and obviously of Hoyle Tanner's professional opinion on what the documents are that have been submitted. Frankly, we've been a bit delayed in that review on the city side of things. I happily say that on behalf of the city. As a result, we have worked with the applicant to request to have some progress this evening. Specifically, we've asked and worked with the applicant to have a discussion of the architectural waivers that have been submitted with the project. The architecture and the waivers that are included for the elements of the project are particularly important to this project, and as you'll see, the applicant is unable to meet the standards of the ordinance. So what I've recommended, and what I'd like to recommend to the Board this evening, is that you open the public hearing after the intent of discussing architecture only. Obviously, no votes to be taken on any of the waivers, but I'd like the applicant to address the architecture of the project in detail and explain why they can't meet the language of the ordinance. And at such time that that discussion is closed, we would like to request that the Board take a motion to continue the three applications until the June third meeting. At such time, we have further discussion on the Hoyle Tanner Report, which will be available to the Board first thing tomorrow morning for their review. I would just note that there are also things on the applicant's side that they're working through. They are having further conversation with DES and NHDOT based on the Board's comments, both at the site walk, and obviously the concerns about drainage tie-in and the wetland impacts that we discussed both at the site walk and at prior meetings. So all of that said, there's a joint interest, I think, in moving this application forward this evening, albeit just in the context of architecture, but we would like to have a further discussion at the June third meeting about all other elements of the project, which I know are critical to this application's consideration.
Okay, thanks. So I think what we'll do is since those are the first three items on the agenda, what I'd ask the Board then is, if we wanna hear this this way, I'll probably put a time limit on that kind of piece of discussion, maybe fifteen minutes tops kind of thing. Since it's just architectural waivers that we're basically talking about, that seems adequate. So, once we get through the referrals, we'll take sort of fifteen minutes of discussion on that, on those items, and then move in to our sort of new business, old business kind of pieces following that, so. So that's kind of the gist of the meeting. So what I'd like to do first up then is start with, and actually, we'll start with the new one, Matt, the one thirty-five. I think Director Cummings is on here. So I'm gonna ask for the referral from the Board of Alderman and proposed R dash twenty-one dash one thirty-five. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, just a quick question. I do know we have someone with a time-sensitive schedule this evening to discuss one thirty-three, the Community Power Agreement. Doria Brown, the city's energy manager, is present to discuss that. She, I know she has a time limit.
Okay, well, let's take that first. So this would be referral from Board of Alderman and proposal R dash twenty-one dash one thirty-three, authorizing the City of Nashville to enter in joint powers agreement, the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. So we have somebody from the city that wants to present this referral?
Yes, hi, I'm Doria Brown. I apologize that I'm not on camera right now, but may I begin?
Yep, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Doria Brown. I'm the Energy Manager for the City of Nashville, and this joint powers agreement is here so that the City of Nashville can partner with other communities to write an aggregation plan, so we can start figuring out how we're going to purchase energy for our community. So Community Power is a new thing that will allow us to purchase electricity on behalf of Nashville residents. Eversource will still deliver all the power to homes, but now Nashville will be able to negotiate a lower energy rate and a greener energy rate, or a greener energy portfolio for that power. So this is just an agreement to allow us to partner with other communities to start using our buying power collectively to figure out how to aggregate that load. So it has no costs whatsoever. It's just going to make my job as Energy Manager of the City of Nashville easier to negotiate these deals as it's forty-seven thousand accounts for the city, and we will be contracting out as a group of communities these services to help us get power supply, and this job is impossible to do with one person in our energy department. So that is what this agreement would be for.
Okay, thanks. Anybody from the Board have any questions regarding this R dash twenty-one dash one thirty-three?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Brown, are you able to talk about the general geography of the communities involved? From what I can see, it's Lebanon, Hanover, Nashua, all of Cheshire County, and one or more additional jurisdictions to be determined. I, that's quite a wide area. I just didn't know if there's a rationale behind that geographic distribution.
There's no rationale behind the geographic distribution. These were the initial communities to start up the organization called the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. We actually just got Exeter to join us. Dover, New Hampshire is voting on this next week, and along with a bunch of other communities looking to join the coalition, which is actually very exciting.
Thank you.
Mr. Weber?
Yes, thank you. Have you ever looked into the same kind of thing that Meredith, Center Harbor, cities up there, they did similar stuff and it went south. It actually did not turn out great. Have you reviewed the problems that they had up there, and so it doesn't happen to you?
A hundred percent I've reviewed that. So that is what this coalition would be for. Those communities went out to bid with just a third-party supplier. They didn't have any services that would help them get out of difficult situations like that, like going out to bid with a third-party supplier that essentially went belly up. So this coalition would help us to avoid that and diversify our portfolio enough where if something like that did happen, the cost wouldn't be passed down to the residents. So a coalition, this kind of thing was formed to avoid situations like that, and really, thank you for bringing it up.
One other thing that I'd like to talk about is, some years back, we had an October snowstorm, and part of our community, and this is probably a plus for what you're gonna be doing, part of the community had power and the 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 electric, electricians that were working for one company did alright, but there was a smaller company, and it did not do good, and it was weeks before people actually had power because of the labor shortage that this one company had.
So that wouldn't be an issue at all for us, because Eversource would still be in charge of delivery for that energy, and the City of Nashville would have no liability for the delivery being interrupted in a snowstorm. So we would have absolutely nothing to do with that.
Yeah, that's, it's an important, you know, people would wanna know, because when you're, when you talk about doing what you're gonna be doing, they do have concerns, so.
Yeah, that would, that would remain the same, though. Whatever is happening now with delivery would remain the same with Eversource when it comes to difficult snowstorms like that.
Yeah, that somebody's looking out for us. Thank you, Dorian.
Okay, any other questions from the Board?
Can't watch it up here. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, an additional question. I'm sorry, I think we have some unmuted folks.
Yeah, Linda, can you run through them?
That's okay. No worries. Thank you, Mr. Chair. With respect to rates, is the Public Utility Commission still going to set and adjust rates? I guess I'm just trying to figure out the overall benefit, or would this coalition somehow be exempt or subject to a lower rate? If Ms. Brown were able to comment on the actual rate and fee structure for transmission, as well as, you know, the other kind of traditional charges that we all see on our Eversource bill every month?
So that rate set for transmission wouldn't be touched, because Eversource would still be in charge of delivery, which is transmission of the energy. So we will not be touching or doing anything in involvement with setting the rate schedule with that. What we would be involved in is setting the rate per kilowatt hour. So when you look at your energy bill, you are charged per kilowatt hour, and then you're charged all these delivery fees. The city would be negotiating that kilowatt hour price. Right now in New Hampshire, anybody can go out and get a different third-party supplier than Eversource if they'd like to, at a lower rate or higher rate if they want to invest in more green energy. What the city would ultimately be doing is purchasing that power on behalf of the community and becoming the new default supplier for just that kilowatt hour, not for transmission fees. And as for the PUC, when we write our aggregation plan as a city, along with the coalition, we have to submit that aggregation plan to the PUC to abide by the rules that they will make for aggregations. Unfortunately, those rules have not been made yet by the PUC, but the coalition will be heavily involved in that process, along with the utilities, as we come up with rules for community power aggregations. So it's important that we join this coalition so that Nashville will have a voice in that rulemaking. It's a very new program.
Thank you.
Any other questions by the Board? Okay. All right, hearing none. For those on the Board, what I'm looking for is a motion that would be either for a positive referral or a positive referral with comments or negative referral. From the Board, Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I would like to make a motion, the Planning Board submit a favorable recommendation to R dash twenty-one dash one thirty-three, authorizing the City of Nashville to enter into a joint powers agreement of Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire.
Thanks, Mr. Ballinger. So we have that motion for favorable recommendation. Any second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weber. Any further discussion? Okay, can we get a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Anne Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay. So next up, referral from Board of Alderman. The other ones are in the, are matter okay in the order of the agenda?
Yes, they are, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so we'll start with Board of Alderman proposed R dash twenty-one dash one thirty-six. This is authorizing developer agreement with payment in lieu of taxes for Bronstein redevelopment. I think Director Cummings is gonna talk about that, and you can go right on to with one thirty-five if you want, following that.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to do a brief intro on this one. Just to sort of define the context of the development agreement and the pilot program. So obviously, the Planning Board's sort of scope of review for this type of referral is not only whether the development agreement is in alignment with the vision and the master plan, obviously, but also, in this case, because it involves the waiver of impact fees, and the national ordinance actually requires that the Planning Board provide comment on that waiver, you're really serving sort of a two-purpose referral review here. The impact fees are directly tied, or the impact fee waiver provision is directly tied to the amount of low-income housing being provided, or certainly a consideration that the Board of Alderman are required to take when they are acting on an impact fee waiver. And the Board, the Planning Board, should directly sort of consider that when making a recommendation. But again, the Planning Board has favorably reviewed and approved the development of this proposal through the Planning Board action, but this is really a larger-picture question related to the development agreement and those impact fees, and Director Cummings will discuss further.
Thanks.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Great. So for the record, Tim Cummings, Director of Economic Development. I'm just gonna quickly share my screen here, and I'm just gonna go through the major elements or terms within the development agreement. So we have our recitals here, which basically sets the table, outlining what it is that we're talking about. And then, all the recitals are incorporated into the agreement, and then we have the, we have the tax incentive that we are providing, which, you know, the first three years, we are not looking to charge any, any amount of taxes. Why are we doing that? It's because this is the time period in which the buildings will be under construction. There will be no revenue or rent payments coming in. So when they actually do stabilize, and we, and there is some tenants, that's when we're gonna be looking to assess our taxes, which is set at two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over fifteen years with a three percent escalator every, every year, starting in twenty twenty-five. The pilot procedure is essentially the same as the tax procedure that all other residents and taxpayers use here in the city. There is a compliance reporting that is necessary. We have the waivers here. The reason why we're looking for your positive recommendation this evening is we are looking to waive the impact fees and, and the various fees associated with this project. It is an affordable housing project. For those of you who are familiar with the Bronstein development, it is rather tired, and it's gonna be wonderful to get some positive economic investment in that area. And I should note that we are increasing the affordability or the housing stock with affordability from the forty, forty-four-ish units currently on site up to two hundred and six. So it's gonna be a net new increase of housing, affordable housing supply of approximately a hundred and sixty units, which is, which is rather substantial. Continuing on here, we have the, the Myrtle Street improvements that we are working with our Department of Public Works to have the Myrtle Street improvements done as a way to help have this public-private partnership take off and be even more, more successful. We have the home funds. We are putting in seven hundred thousand dollars over a couple of years in home funds. And then essentially, you get into just standard boilerplate-type language, notice the laws that will govern the agreement, how you do amendments, counterpart, severability authority, and it kind of rounds out the agreement there. It's, as you can see, it's just about four pages. It has been it has been very well-received thus far, and I would ask for your favorable recommendation this, this evening.
Okay, thanks. Let's take questions from the Board for, this is for one thirty-six, R dash twenty-one one thirty-six.
Weber?
Mr. Weber, go ahead.
Thank you. You said no school, no impact fees, that including school, because this is gonna have, do you know what approximately usually would it be a school kids? How that would impact the schools, the amount of kids that would be going to school from the housing?
I don't have that at my fingertips. I could, I could get that over to the Planning Department. I know it was looked at. I can tell you anecdotally that we don't see a lot of schoolchildren in these, in these types of units. There will be some three-bedrooms, so we'll probably have more than we traditionally see in apartment complexes, but you're not gonna see thirty students all of the same age, which would trigger a hiring of a teacher or something like that. That just is a statistical improbability.
Yeah, I don't need those, the stats. You guys looked at it. That's great. The other thing is, did HUD come into place? Any of their HUD grants or anything like that came into?
Yes, the home funds are actually HUD, not, not CDBG specifically, but home funds, which is another type of HUD program, is coming into play with this, with this project. Mr. Chair, if I, Mr. Chair, if I may, just one other comment I wanted to make, and I apologize, I failed to mention this when I was giving my overview. Really, this evening, I'm hoping that this Board will continue to support this project, because it is a continuation of the vision that the city had laid out prior relative to the master plan and the downtown redevelopment that is, that is going on. So I wanted to make sure I got that on the record. I think it's really important that we move that the referral here this evening, looking for a positive recommendation, is just an endorsement that this is true to the, the vision that the city has for, for a downtown redevelopment for a site like this, and I suspect that that wouldn't be a problem, because as I know, this is, this project has already been approved for its site plan by this body. So at some point, it has met your, your desires and your, your standards.
Yep, okay. Other questions, Mr. Armour?
No.
Okay, anybody else from the Board?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Cummings, do you have an estimate on what the actual total loss in revenue? Would be for exempting this property for the uh the next three years. Uh, plus at at pinning the the tax assessment to two twenty-five and escalating annually at three percent?
I do have that, and I presented that to the uh Board of Alderman the other evening.
Could you reiterate that number, please, uh, for those who didn't see the Board of Alderman hearing?
Uh, yes, happy to. So that's a uh on over the life of the agreement, about a fifty percent uh tax. Forgiveness, uh, if you were to tax it at at its full fair cash value. You'd be looking at, you know, just over four hundred thousand dollars and and we're we're gonna be charging them about two hundred and twenty-five with a three percent escalator. Depending on where you are in the agreement, you know, it could be ten percent either way. But on average, it's about a forty, uh, a fifty percent uh um uh reduction.
Okay, and and just again, ju- just for clarification, over over the life of the agreement. And again, I know rates change, but does does that equate to a million, two million? I I'm just trying to get a rough idea on the the number over the the length of the of the program.
Oh, we, I I'm sorry, are you talking about the aggregate figure? Like the the total, the total tax. Savings or that the that the developer or the project would receive over the over the eighteen years?
Uh, yes, sir.
Uh, I sure, hold on one second. I'll be happy to get that for you. Just bear with me for one moment. I need to pull up the right file here.
It's okay. Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the time.
Okay, thanks. By the board? Okay, hearing none. Uh, I would entertain a motion on the board on this?
Uh, I I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I, do you want me to get that number still?
I I I would be interested in knowing it. I guess I I'm just trying to do the quick arithmetic here, because whatever the the number. Comes up as for for tax purposes. It 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 looks like between the waivers, um, the Myrtle Street improvements and the home funds. You you you're gonna be adding about another million-plus dollars in subsidations, um, or subsidies, rather, on top of that. So I was just trying to get some understanding. Is is to. What basically the 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 overall.
Sure.
Of the project will be.
Yeah, I have, I have the file up in front of me now, so um, and it's a rather complicated answer. And I, but uh, since since you asked, um, so if if we were to look at this project as though it was. A non-affordable, uh, non-affordability-type, Lytec-type project, it would get taxed at a hundred percent its valuation. I note that because there's already an RSA in uh New Hampshire RSA on the. On the books that allows for. A deduction to basically bring your your taxes down by about eighty percent. And that is prior to any any type of local discount that we would be, we would be providing. So with that being said, and and again, that's statutorily afforded to them. There's no, there's no ambiguity on that. So in two thousand and twenty-two, and I kept the tax rate consistent. Because obviously the tax rate fluctuates, but what I did do is add an inflationary figure of one point five percent year over year. Throughout the life of the deal and that that compounds. The first three years, you'd see uh approximately four hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and thirty-six thousand. In tax revenue if it was at a hundred percent. Now, I say that to you to provide you context, what they would be eligible for and would receive. And really what matters is the eighty percent figure, which is about um three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Three hundred and forty-nine thousand and then three hundred and fifty-four thousand. We obviously would be giving a hundred percent break, so you could add that in. And you would uh, you'd get a um, uh, obviously. You know, about a million dollars right there. And then over the course of the agreement. If we were to just tax them at that eighty percent. You'd see something like um three hundred and fifty thousand over the over the fifteen years. Since we will be only receiving about two hundred and twenty-five thousand with a three percent escalator. Really, the discount that they would be receiving, the aggregate would be just under two point four million dollars. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I I I think it does. Thank you, Mr. Cummings. And again, I just wanted to to reiterate, there there is about an additional million dollars, plus or minus, that that is going through. Whether it be the home funds or the Myrtle Street improvements or the waiver of impact fees. So the 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 level, the level of 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 subsidy is is not insignificant. But I I was just trying to get a better, a better handle on the total dollar amount. So thank you.
Uh, other questions um from the board for? Mr. Cummings? Okay, uh, I guess at this point, then I'll take a motion regarding our dash twenty-one dash one thirty-six. On the board, Mr. Weber?
Hey. Thank you. I'd like to make a favorable um motion to um. Approve uh R dash twenty-one dash one thirty-six, the authorized developer agreement.
Okay, so we have a a motion to pass forward a favorable recommendation on R dash twenty-one dash one thirty-six from Mr. Weber. Do you have a second on it?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, okay, let's get a roll vote on that.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
No.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes five to one.
Okay, so next up, um, Director Cummings, can you uh go ahead and go through um R dash twenty-one dash one thirty-five, please?
Yes, hap- yeah, yeah, happy to hear. Uh, please bear with me.
So folks from the board, this is the one that was added to the agenda, so we'll kind of watch this on screen.
So I'm uh sharing my screen here, and hopefully everyone can see it. Just very quickly, what we're looking to do is amend the purchase and sale agreement for the for the sale of Burke Street. Uh, this body had already favorably recommended the sale, and I'll note that the Board of Alderman already passed the resolution authorizing the sale. But as time went on with the prospective purchaser, um, they indicated a. A problem with turning radiuses for eighteen-wheeler trucks to be able to have full circulation around the building. And so what they proposed is uh essentially a truck route here as an easement. And we are, we are, we we, and they would be burdening our land. Um, as you can see, this black line here is basically our property line. We are, we are agreeing to this, and why are we agreeing to this? Because they are going to build us a parking lot here of about fifty parking spaces. Um, this was always the original plan, was to create this area as a parking field. So there could be future expansion of the wastewater treatment plant that's a little further south of this site. But in addition to that, something we were able to do is also have an access easement all the way on up through this area. Which will be uh not a public access easement, but uh something that the uh wastewater treatment plant can use. And other members of the association of this of this area would be able to use, which would help keep. Uh vehicular traffic off of uh Sawmill Road. So there was a an ancient easement on the books that essentially did that. But it was this dashed line in here that kind of dead-ended into a no-man's land with, you know, nothing right here. And we're actually gonna just improve upon it and actually codify it, make it official. It ties up a little bit further. On the plan here and just kind of makes it work, work better for the site. So uh, this has been reviewed by our engineering department. This has been discussed at length. We are ti- this is a very time-sensitive matter. We do not want to hold on to this asset any longer than necessary. We are trying to sell it. We have a closing set for May twenty-seventh. So your favorable recommendation on this uh would be, would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Uh, any questions on this uh new R dash twenty-one dash one thirty-five by the board? Mr. Weber?
The parking lot uh adjacent to the truck drives, is there any protection for the? For the people parking in that parking because of the uh, the trucking that's gonna come in there? Uh, could have a problem, flat tire or something. Or is there any kind of protection for those parked cars?
Yes, yes, there will be a buffer. I don't, I, it's not gonna be a fence, but there will be some sort of hardscaping, landscaping buffer that will provide. Delineation of the of the parking lot when it gets designed. That is understood and part of the conversation.
Thank you.
Uh, other questions from the board? Okay, uh, could I get a motion, and this would again be for R dash twenty-one dash one thirty-six? And the title of that, Matt, is what?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the title of that is Resolution Authorizing a First Amendment to Purchase and Sale Agreement for Real Property Located at. One forty-one through one forty-three Burke Street, and that's map eleven, lot one fifty-eight.
Okay. So you can reference the title as indicated by Mr. Sullivan if you want in your, in your motion. That would be fine. It's on the record. Anybody wanna make a motion on this?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I I'd be happy to make a motion, but just for clarification, I I think I heard or or I misinterpreted. Um, uh, the numbering of the authorization, is it R twenty-one dash one thirty-five or R twenty-one dash one thirty-six? And my my apologies for not understanding that.
Yes, Mr. Chair, it is twenty-one, one thirty-five.
Okay.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Chair, with that clarification, if I may, I'd like to make a recommendation for um. A a favorable recommendation to Board of Alderman. Item R dash, uh, R dash twenty-one dash one thirty-five. Titled uh as stipulated uh or as conveyed by by Mr. Sullivan.
Great, so we have that motion for a favorable recommendation on our twenty-one dash one thirty-five by Mr. Ballinger. Do you have a second on that? Uh, see, Mr. in going up. Mr. Hirsch, will you second on that?
Yes.
Okay, so we have the Mr. Hirsch's second. Any further discussion? Okay, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes six to zero.
Okay, thanks. Um, Mr. Cummings, did you have one more you were gonna talk on? Cause we'll just get through all yours. Was that one forty-four, yours?
Uh, correct, yes, if I may, um, just very, very quickly, I'm here also to ask for your favorable recommendation of R twenty-one, one forty-four. Uh, I'm gonna just again briefly share my screen, and I'm doing that just to give everyone an orientation of where we're talking about. We're talking about this piece of land here known as seventy-seven dash five, uh, some four and a half, approximately four and a half acres of land. That the city uh is looking to purchase from the Milliard Associates. We have a purchase and sale agreement um uh negotiated, and I am looking for your favorable recommendation on this. Um, why are we um looking to purchase this this piece of property? And and it's multi, uh, it's multifold. Uh, first, um, I think everyone uh here may be aware of the thought process of a dog park happening. And there's a feasibility study, study currently happening and underway. And uh, we would look at this area as being where we would be looking to have the dog park. But in addition to that, and just as important, this area is a very environmentally sensitive area. Not only is it the uh flood flood plain, but it's the floodway, which is even a high degree of. Of of environmental sensitivity. We want to make sure we keep it as open space. Um, and um, it is also doubling as unofficially right now, the trailhead for. Mine Falls Park, which you can see along here. And I think most people have always thought that this land was already owned by the city in Nashua. I think customarily, it's been treated that way. Technically, it's not. We're looking to uh to correct that. So with that being said, the purchase and sales calls for uh three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, with an option for these two abutters here at seventy-seven dash two and seventy-seven dash eleven. To basically where this line is right here, basically have the option to um uh purchase. For the same sum, sum of money that we're basically paying uh to to have this area to expand their current parcels. That's something that they would be contemplated, and they'd be afforded the opportunity of ninety days to do that if they so desired. I say that just to make sure everyone is aware that the lot will ultimately have maybe a little bit smaller than the, than what is currently recorded right now. Uh, it also on the site is a a radio tower, um, that it's under lease. That lease uh comes to to an end in about two years. There's a five-year option uh to extend on it. It pays, it pays revenue or a lease fee of approximately twenty-eight thousand dollars. The Milliard Associates is gonna retain the rights of managing that lease for two years, and then it would turn over to the city. So uh, the full value of fu- someone is wondering would be approximately three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. But a direct out-of-pocket expense for the city of Nashua would be three twenty-five. Where are the funds coming from? The funds are for this is coming from the Broad Street Parkway uh project. This money has already been. Bonded, so there would be no new tax increase for this. All we're doing is repurposing funds that we've already. Captured and rededicating them to this project instead of the Broad Street Parkway, which. And I should note is now known as the Veterans Memorial Parkway. Because that project he- came in uh under budget. So I'll stop sharing my screen there. Uh, but I wanted to give everyone just a quick orientation of what we are talking about, and again, I would ask for your favorable recommendation this evening. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so for the board members, any questions uh from Mr. Cummings on our twenty-one dash or one forty-four? Uh, seems pretty straightforward, not hearing any. Great. Uh, anybody wanna make a motion?
Mr. Chair? Um, I I will not be making a motion, but uh based on the the testimony of Mr. Cummings with regard to uh financial sourcing. For the purchase, um, I would like to recuse myself from from voting on this case. So tha- thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ballinger. Uh, anybody else from the board wanna make a motion? Mr. Weber?
Thank you. Uh, a favorable uh recommendation for resolution R. Dash twenty-one dash one forty-four, uh, authorizing the purchase of property located at Alpine Street.
Great, so we have that motion by Mr. Weber for the favorable recommendation for R dash twenty-one dash one forty-four. You have a second for that? It's like a second, Hirsch, okay. Uh, any further discussion? All right, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes five to zero.
All right, thanks a lot. Uh, last up for the referrals, we have a referral from Board of Alderman on R dash twenty-one dash one thirty-nine. This is for a bus pull-off and shelter easement on the Bridge Street. And temporary construction easement and use easement agreement on Sanders Street. So do we have somebody from the city that wants to speak on that?
Mr. Chair, we do have a representative from the applicant here to speak this evening.
Okay, great, sure, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Andy Pearlman. I'm an attorney in Nashua, the Law Office of Prunier and Pearlman. Representing Renaissance at Nashua, I'm limited liability company. Um, you will recall, this is phase two of our Bridge Street project. Phase one was on Bancroft Street. It's fully built out. I think we'd all agree, that was a, a very successful project. Uh, we're back to you with phase two that this board approved. Um, in uh April of this year. And you may recall, uh, one of the conditions of approval, a standard condition of approval is that any legal documents have to be approved by legal counsel. Um, and that's what we're doing tonight. We have two easements that need Board of Alderman approval. Um, the first one is the use and access easement on Sanders Street, which um. Is the very same type of easement that we had approved and are using today on Bancroft Street with phase one. Um, the developer will be building out um Sanders Street. Um, will be maintaining Sanders Street and then using Sanders Street according to the plans that were, were approved. So that's exactly what we did on phase one. And everything's the same, except we're also offering the city um a bus stop easement right along Bridge Street. Uh, for the city's future use. We're carving out the um land now. Um, I don't believe there's any plans by the city to install a bus stop. But it's there when the city is ready to do that. Uh, so that's all we're doing tonight, Mr. Chairman. Um, we are looking for a favorable, favorable recommendation back to the Board of Aldman.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Pearlman. Um. Folks from the board, uh, anybody have any questions uh on this? Mr. Weber?
Thank you. Um, is that pullout, would that be accessible? Uh, for like um, the ride, um, the um, the lift? Uh, other taxis, things like that, other than buses?
Uh, well, I, I imagine where it's, it's, it's a public easement, so you know, people will be able to use it. Um, if, as long as they're not interfering with, with the bus operation. Uh, so you can imagine a taxi, you can imagine Uber pulling in right there, but you know, it's, it's intended as a public easement for all, all that use.
Yeah, it's just one of those things that a lot of people are in, especially on the Renaissance, they might wanna have that ability to. That's a good stopping, uh, understood place, things like that. That's.
Yeah, agreed.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on the board on this one? Okay, not seeing any. Uh, I would ask the board, does anybody wanna make a motion regarding uh, this is R twenty one dash one thirty nine? Mr. Weber?
Thank you. I'd like to make a favorable res- uh, for resolution. Uh, R dash twenty one dash one thirty nine, authorizing the bus pull off and shelter easement on Bridge Street.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Weber for, to pass along a favorable recommendation to the Board of Aldman, Alderman for R dash twenty one. Dash one thirty nine. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Ian Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Steve.
Larry Hurst?
Yes.
And that motion passes five to zero with one abstention.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Linda.
Okay, uh, I think that's all that I'm at, right? For the referrals? Okay.
That is correct.
Uh, so following our um earlier discussion about schedule, um, I'd like to put out to the board here. Um, whether somebody would like to make a motion regarding the old business site plans and subdivision plans specifically. Related to the landing at Nashua, and this would be eight twenty one dash zero zero two nine, dash zero zero six two. And dash zero zero two eight. Um, right now, those three applications are. Um, have been continued. Um, we're on the table. Um, so we, or um, are not on the table. We would need to make a motion to, to reopen the hearing. And the intent, I would think, is that we reopen the hearing consistent with what Mr. Sullivan talked about earlier is. Specifically to hear discussion from the applicant regarding the architectural waivers that are being presented. And any feedback from the board on, you know, just questions that we may have about those waivers. Um, with no intent for uh additional uh discussions outside of that scope. And we've essentially put it back into, can, um, in, uh, into continuance to the, to the June sixth meeting. So would anybody like to make a motion to uh open the hearing for that reason? You go ahead, Mr. Weber.
Yes, I'd just like to uh open the uh site plan eight twenty one dash zero zero two nine. Uh, zero zero six two, zero zero two eight for a continued discussion of those.
Um, and then is it corrected, it's consistent with my recommendation regarding the scope of that?
Yes, just for the scope of that. Thank you.
Okay, great. So we have that motion. Do we have a second on that?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Okay, second by Mr. Ballinger. Okay, so um, right now we have eight twenty one dash zero zero two nine, dash zero zero six two. And dash zero zero two eight open. Um, so I know we have someone from the applicant that wants to talk. I would just remind them that uh. We're, we're, we'd like to limit it to the scope that I discussed and I also would to limit it to fifteen minutes. So.
Do we, do we have to vote on that?
Uh, no, the, the hearing's open now. I'm just kinda giving the applicant um some direction, so.
Thank you.
All right.
Great, uh, thank you very much. Um, this is Brian Pratt from Tussin O'Neil. I'm a civil engineer working on the project. Um, we agree completely that we're just gonna talk about architecture. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna hand it over to John Alvarado. He's the architect for Costco. So um, I'll ask him to uh take over the discussion and share the screen to show the rendering and discuss the architecture and the waivers.
Great, thanks a lot.
Hey, good evening, everybody. My name, for the record, my name is John Alvarado. Uh, the physical address of uh, MD two is eighty four forty four West Park Drive, Suite one twenty, McLean, Virginia. Uh, if you may, um, I may uh share my screen so we can go over the elevations and along with good elevation, we can talk about the waivers that we're looking. On this application.
Sure.
So, can you see the, the rendering that I'm presenting?
We can, yeah.
So, um, to, to start, I wanna say that uh before arriving to this concept, uh, we worked. With the staff on the original elevations that we had planned, or I would say the typical master elevations that Costco always use. Um, and with those, during those conversations, basically that concept evolved to this what you're seeing right now on the screen. To. Try to get as close as we can uh to meet the city's regulations. I mean, for, for, for the standards that city has, for the locations on this specific uh, you know, sunning and area. Um, so I think in, on, on, or last hearing, you all want to see the building. The building didn't change. Uh, uh, for what you saw last time, but uh, I wanna go through real, I mean, um. The waivers that we're looking. So the first waiver that uh were presented is the facades exceeding one hundred feet in length. Must include a three percent projections recess for twenty percent of the facade's facade length. Um, we're dual constructability and how these buildings are put together. That is, I mean, we're trying to avoid all those uh pushes and, and, and recesses and elevations. Uh, we normally try to do and concentrate that type of, of, of architectural features. Just in the entrance, in the main entrance of, of, of the building. That is what you can see here, that you have some recess. And you have that, that, those elements. But if you see the rest of the building, I mean, is just one plane. But to break the building architecture, we, we, we work with different materials, shapes and textures. So it's not just a plain white or a, a plain uh building without any, I mean, any, any, any features. Um, so that's the first one. Um, the second one is a ground floor ornamentation for at least fifty percent of the facade length. Uh, again, we concentrate that in our entrance. Um, we have. Uh, concrete benches at our entrance. Um, we also providing kind of a, a. Lower band all around the building that you can see right here, right here. That is um texture CMU. Trying to get, I mean, closer to, to that requirement. Um. The next one. Um, is actually, I mean, I will say there's three that are kind of combined together and. One is the average height of the parapet wall shall not exceed one percent of the height of the supporting wall. The next one is parapet walls shall not exceed one third the height of the supporting wall at any point. And the next one is that the requirement is to have three or more roof slopes. Okay, so, uh. The bit, the, the, the structure of the building is a pre, uh, pre-engineered building. That basically is fabricated on a shop and the pieces come to the side and they get erected, right? So. In doing that, to simplify the design and the construction uh sequence. We have a, a, just a two slope roof, uh, that normally we call a flat roof because it's just a, an a quarter inch slope. So you will have a, a high point right in the middle and you will basically go down to the sides of the building. So in the low point, in, in, in the front face and the back face of the, of the, of the building. At the low, at the high point, um, let me go down to the elevations, so I, I can explain that better. So this is my building. So I have a low point here and I have a high point in the middle of the building. So in the high point of the building, I'm in compliance, but in the lower point of the building, I'm not. So that's why we're requiring that variance in those three, I mean, with those three, with, with, with those three um items. Also, um, if we just have lower parapets all around, the building, because of his, of, of its size. It will look really, really skinny, really, really short and that will look, it won't look good. So. That's, I mean, that's one more item that, I mean, why we, we're trying to um apply for these waivers. And the third one, that height of the parapets, it will help us to screen all the rooftop, rooftop equipments. Uh, in the cases that the rooftop equipments are not screened with the parapets, we actually put in. You know, screening, like for example, in these that are a little bit taller, we put in a screening around those equipments as required by, by the city ordinance. Um, the next one, there is two that are kind of combined together as well, that is building materials. So the city is required to use brick, wood, sandstone, CMU, or native materials. Uh, we, again, for the. The Costco standard is to be sustainable. Uh, we try to, um, you know, be energy efficient. Uh, in the whole process, not just in the building, so how the building function, but in the construction. So. Doing that, so basically when we select the materials, that's where we base sustainability. Uh, the product life cycle, energy efficient, and how we're gonna put the building together. Uh, right now, we're using a combination of, if you see glass entrances, uh, I mean, at the two points of entrance of the building. Uh, we have a texture CMU, texture CMU panels all around the building and the base of, of the building. And we have three different metal panels. There are texture metal panels. Again, the CMU that we're using is texture is uh normally known as a split, split face, um, CMU. Uh, the color scheme of the facade, I mean, go together with, I mean, grays and, 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 and of whites colors. Um, so with those panels being sustainable and the, with the life cycle and also the maintenance of this. I mean, it will help Costco and that's their standard. To try to get close to the city regulations or what the city is asking in, in these regulations. That's why we brought, bring to the design, the CMU panels that, if you can see, is these areas.
Yep.
Right? Uh, we're talking about eighteen percent of the whole facade is gon- is gonna be CMU. Um. And in this elevation, let me zoom in.
What's that?
Right here, so.
Okay. All right, you got it.
And.
Yeah. All right, thanks.
Oh. So the panel that we're using.
Yeah, I saw that, I just saw that. So I wish they had done on the, like in the middle.
Kevin, Kevin, please mute yourself.
Like a.
Kevin, please mute yourself.
Okay. Okay, continue. So this is like the siding profile, so you're gonna have a texture of it, so it's not just a blank piece of metal. And having the two different textures, so you give that architectural uh differences and, and appeal to the building. Um. One more uh design key, I mean, that we have, and let me go back to the rendering so you can, you can see it better. I mean, and where we focus is, is our entrance, because that's the way that we're calling our customers. Hey, this is Costco, this is our entrance, come over here. And that's what we have these missionary piers, these big glass um entries. Leading to the, to this cover canopy and we'll put in like a rain screen around it on the top, right? To, I mean, to get it visible and, and, and make the statement. Um, the next. There's, the next two are also combined, that says customer entrance on all aboding street sites. Uh, we have, I'll say like the new road that, I mean, your site plan. Uh, aspect that will have, I mean, one or two, like, I mean, if we consider these roads. But they're, they're like internal roads, I mean, we end up having enters on all, all sides of the buildings. And that's not that, that Costco typical buildings and the customer experience that, I mean, I, I imagine most, most of you already experienced because you go shop at Costco, so. That's the rest, we're just having one main entrance. Um, the other one is each customer enters shall have at least three of the following um, um, items. Canopies, support, cause roof overheads, recessed projections, arcades, rice cornices, parapets over the door. Pig roof forms, arches, outdoor patio, display windows, architectural details, et cetera, et cetera. So we cannot comply with the different entrances, but that's why we're doing the statement of having this entrance. That captures some of the elements that are required on their, uh, on the ordinance. And lastly, the last uh waiver is the mechanical appearances shall not exceed fifty, fifty decivolts between seven AM to eight PM. And forty five deci- decivolts at night from eight PM to seven EM. Uh, we have done studies of this, I mean, this is the first time that we have to do this. And the previous studies that we've done, I mean, we're exceeding that. Uh, we're around sixty seven. Uh, average, uh, during the day and fifty four during the night. Um, but those numbers that we get is without roof, I mean, without any of the screening of the rooftop equipments. So those numbers should get lower with the screening that we're providing already on all the rooftop units and equipments. Um, so that's the building. Uh, so this is your, I mean, your main shot when you're entering. Uh. Another feature that we have is this cover canopy where we're gonna plan to store the cards. So customer, I mean, can be protected, I mean, uh, for the elements. Um, this is the other view, when if you're looking at the tire center. So if you're looking basically the building from this, from this point towards the entrance. Uh, this shot is the same, basically if you're in the corner of the, of the receiving, the lowering dock of the building. Here is where you will see with the building and the gas station. So. Going to the gas station, gas station basically will match the colors. Um, the proposed gas station is a three by three is uh. What we call a nine. Um, the proposed gas station is a three by three, is uh what we call a nine pack with eighteen fueling positions. Uh, this is a shot, we'll like, what's gonna look at night. And this is a little bit of the materials I was already talking, so you're gonna have exterior LEDs for, uh, to, to illuminate the sign. You have a perforated metal rain screen, you have your two different type of metal panels and your brick veneer. Uh, now this is the canopy, you're gonna have, I mean, enough lighting to the canopy. Uh, sometimes they, I mean, the, the gas station, depending on the hours of operation, opens a little bit earlier than the warehouse. Uh, it's gonna be fully illuminated for security and, I mean, comfortable for declines. Um. Is, I mean, exposed structure, I mean, it's pretty simple, but it will go along with the, I mean, with the, with the building design. Uh, something that, you cannot feel real, but I mean, thing you can see a little bit, this is a small enclosure that, um. And that we have there, the electronics and all the equipment that, um, basically run the gas station. It's not like, um, you know, uh, like a convenience store or anything, it's just a place where all the equipment is. And sometimes, I mean, during really hot summers or winters, um, the, you know, the, the employees are in the floor, can go there and. And get away from, from, from the elements. Uh, with that, uh, I can, I can end. Um, I don't know if J P, I mean, I know he's in the, in the call, he will, he would like to add something. He is the real city director for Costco for this project. But, I mean, this is all what we have, this is the waivers. Thank you very much for, for the attention and if you have any question, please, I'm, I'm happy to help. I mean, I'm sorry, I'm happy to answer any question that you may have.
Okay, thanks. Um, so for the board members, um, does anybody have any questions about the waivers? I mean, we're trying to keep this particular piece of the discussion just to the architectural waivers, you know? Because we've still got a lot of other things we're waiting for. Um, you know, and following me. Anybody have any questions on what Mr. Alvarado presented from, anybody from the board? Mr. Weber?
Thank, thank you. Um. One, uh, first question is on the roofing material. It shows white and the reason I'm asking that is because um, there's people, this is lower than other parts of the, you know, from the street. And the other places, is that gonna be a, a nice clean, well, basically white is really a nice top?
Yeah, I mean, the roof is not white, uh, normally is a metal, a thin stand, standing metal roof. That is a, a metal, like metal color, like, like, um, like a soft gray. So it's not like that black or, or, or hard roof that you will make a seminar.
It's not, I was thinking it was a rubber roof, white.
No, no, it's not rubber, it's, it's, it's a metal roof.
Okay, that's fine. My second question, have you guys um, uh, thought about, because you have such a large building that, um, consider. Um, solar panels, uh, it would really increase the green space. So I, that's not a recommend, you know, a stipulation ever. It's just, it would be something to consider because of the size of the building, that's the only thing I'm saying.
To be honest with you, Mr. Weber, no, we haven't considered this. Uh, I'm not sure that we do that, that much around the, in the Costco firms. Sometimes when they make sense, because you know, solar panels need to have in the right position, in the right direction. And your building has to be oriented to get the best results, but, um, I'll be honest, no, we, we haven't taken a look at that.
Okay, take a look at it, but no, nothing, that's all.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions by the board, again, specific to the architectural waivers? Mr. Ballinger?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I, I think the, the site walk gave me some perspective of, of elevation. I, I honestly didn't realize how, how far uh below D W Highway the site sat until I, I, I walked it. I didn't know if, if the applicant's team had prepared any, any renderings, um, perhaps with the, the perspective from D W Highway. To see exactly what was visible from, um, from the, the, the largest uh budding arterial.
Um, the answer to that, Mr. Mr. Ballinger, is not, but we can provide that, um, I mean, for the next meeting, so you can, you can see how will be the look, I mean, if you're up, up in the hill, looking down.
And, 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 thank you, um, thank, thank you, John. Um, um, but part of the rationale behind that question is, is aesthetically, personally, I don't, I don't. See any, any issues with what's been brought forth tonight, but um, I didn't know if there was going to be any, any large. Signs trying to, you know, uh, get drivers' attentions, if you will, often those are the case with, with. Um, larger, larger retail sites, honestly, even some smaller commercial sites. And I just didn't know what the, the aesthetic would be, uh, looking from the, the public, uh, the public right of way. So thank, thank you.
Yeah, or believe on that is that I don't think you will be able to see it, uh, any, any type of signage or even the building. Um, but yeah, we will, we'll, they, we will, we will bring something so it's graphically clear, so you can see it.
And, and Mr. Chair, if I may just ask one other question and, and, and then I, I apologize if this was, was brought up. But is there going to be any sort of marquee sign or attraction sign, if you will, for lack of a better term? And, and I apologize if I didn't get the terminology correct, but something posted, um, either at the intersection. Um, of Stipbrooke and Daniel Webster or at Adventure Way in Daniel Webster. Or if there's any sort of, uh, perhaps, uh, guide signs, trailblazing signs coming from the, the highway. Um, or from the turnpike rather, directing folks to the new location?
Yes, that is, uh, we did another application about the signage and, uh, that was already approved in a sunny hearing. And we will have two pylon signs that will be visible when you drive, um, in, uh, I mean, in the main road. That basically will tell you Costco is down there as well as the, uh, the other, um, uses or, 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 I mean. Um, businesses that are gonna be down there. So yeah, that will be, that will, that will exist. I don't have with me that, that plan or the allocation that, I mean, if you want to see it, I don't know if Matt Burden or.
I guess that, that would be my, my neck, my follow-up question, I don't know if Mr. Sullivan would care to address this. I, I'm trying to understand what's under the purview of the planning board and what's not under the purview of the planning board. But I, I, if Mr. Sullivan could provide clarification, that would be appreciated.
Certainly, and Mr. Chair, Mr. Ballinger would be happy to. Uh, and if Mr. Parsons could mute his phone, that would be great as well. Perhaps, perhaps not. Um, so the, the zoning board has already approved multiple variances, including height for some pylon signage that Mr. Alvarado discussed. Now, that signage is intended to have customer capture, if you will, along the D W Highway corridor, just to the point that you raised, Mr. Ballinger. Uh, the, the height of the signs has already been technically approved, however, the location of the signs is within the purview of the planning board to some extent. When it comes to the public health, safety and welfare, obviously. If a signage location that was proposed would obstruct site distance or would obstruct some other movement within the, the site. I believe the planning board could weigh in directly on the site location.
Can you mute?
Rob, could you please mute your phone?
There you go.
Thank you. Um, so obviously the, the location of the signage is in, in, to some extent, under the purview of the planning board and your regulatory authority. I think what it might be important that the next meeting to provide is a rendering that not only displays the, 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 the building itself and the signage on the building. But also one that captures the height of the proposed signage that's been approved by the zoning board. And how that fits into the context of the site, particularly from D W Highway, because that's the, sort of the view shed that I think is most critical here. Um, so again, I, I think you have some authority, but it has been approved to some extent through the zoning board. And, and certainly will be subject to assigned permit as well through the planning department.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, and, uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I personally think that would be helpful, but uh, uh, obviously it's the, the, the pleasure of the board as, as, as a whole, but tha- thank you for the clarification.
Uh, any other board questions? We can, our time here, so.
Mr. Chair, I, I do know that the, the True Storage folks wanted to quickly comment in their architecturals as well, very similar as far as need for materials, waivers and some of the same elements. Um, I, I would respectfully request that perhaps Chris Lewis be given an opportunity to speak briefly to the, again, really similar requests, I believe, uh, at the True Storage site.
Yeah, I think we can do that, we'll try to.
Yeah, oh. This is Chris Lewis, uh, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, six seventy North Commercial Street, Manchester, New Hampshire. Thank you for the opportunity, um, to speak with you tonight. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen if I can here. So similarly, we're looking for some relief and I'll just go through the items real quick and then, and then show you the, the images of the architecture. Um, item C, the ground floor ornamentation for at least fifty percent of the facade length. What we're proposing is a stone pattern, um, on the base of the wall up to six feet at all the entrances along the facade. And then above that, a dark beige stucco wall, um, for twenty feet. The second item is item J, the three or more roof, uh, sloping planes. This building has a flat roof, um. And so there won't be multiple, multiple sloping roofs. That's just a, a function of the type of building that it is and, you know, we feel like it fits in with the, um, with our design scheme here. Item K is the building materials. Um, what we're proposing and I'll go over is, um, metal panels, uh, a stone finish ephesus with, um, with the subtle native colors. And then item M. Um, predominant exterior material should not be smooth spaced, um, panel. So this is, this is again, looking for a little relief on the use of the metal panels. So up on the top here, you see the south elevation. Um, the, the, the base is, like I said, the stucco, which is a smoked putty. Also a very, um, subtle, uh, sandstone kind of look with the, um, with the metal panels above that. The, the center entrance, which you see here in blue, is, is also, it's a bump out, this bumps out two and a half feet from the facade. And it's a subtle blue color to, to signify the, the entrance. And then each of the corners have the entry feature look, which also is ephesus with glass, um, and protruding, um, awnings at each of the entrances. So I'll scroll down to my. So these are the, the actual images of, of what they'll look like.
Okay.
And I'm happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Uh, anybody on the board have any questions for Mr. Lewis regarding these, uh, architectural waivers? They're similar to the other ones. Okay, doesn't look like there's any board questions. Thank you. Um, so I guess, I think we've wrapped up the architectural, um, sort of waiver review part. So at this point, from the board, what I'd be looking for is a motion. This motion would be to table items, again, that would be items, uh. Zero, zero, eight, eight twenty-one, zero, zero, two-nine, zero, zero, six-two, and zero, zero, two-eight. To the, what's the next, is the sixth of June?
Is the third.
Third. The third of June meeting. Um, so looking for that motion from the board. Uh, Mr. Weber?
That, would that be a continuance to?
Um.
For a continuance?
Yeah, it'd be a continuance, I guess, right?
Okay. Okay, um, I'd like to make a, a motion to, for continuance of, um, site plans eight twenty-one, zero dash, zero, zero, two-nine. Uh, zero, zero, six-two, zero, zero, two-eight for the, uh, to the third of June.
Okay, so that motion by Mr. Weber to, um, continue these three, um, applications to the third of June meeting. Do we have a second on that?
Second, Mr. Chair?
All right, so the second by Mr. Ballinger in for the discussion? Okay, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Mary Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes six to zero.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
To, um, this, what is some old business as well, this is, uh, case number eight twenty-one dash zero, zero, seven, two. Investments LLC owner. Application and acceptance of proposed site plan to construct a paved vehicle storage lot. Properties located at L Glenwood Street, sheet one-twenty-eight. This was postponed from our, uh, May sixth, twenty-twenty-one meeting. I don't believe we took jurisdiction of this one during the last meeting. So we would need to first, uh, from the board, have a motion to, um, take jurisdiction of this application if it's ready for us. Somebody from the board wanna make that motion? For jurisdiction?
Mr. Chair? Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to accept jurisdiction of a new business site plan, eight twenty-one dash zero, zero, seven, two, Rose Common Investments LLC.
All right, so that motion to take jurisdiction by Mr. Ballinger, do we have a second?
Second.
Whoever? Any further discussion? Okay, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Mary Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes six to zero.
Okay, so, uh, I guess Paul, you're up for this one?
Yes, I am, thank you and good evening. Um, for the record, my name is Paul Chisholm, I'm a professional engineer with Keach Nordstrom Associates, representing, uh, the applicant Ross Common Investments LLC. I'm gonna share my screen here so you can see the, uh, site plan. Uh, the plan before you decide is proposed vehicle storage lot that will be managed by the Tully Automotive Group. Uh, most of you probably remember this property as, I think it was last fall, uh, we moved forward and received approval for the auto body shop. Uh, for a, that it was ultimately decided that the auto body shop was better fit for the D W Highway location that the Tully's, uh, currently own and operate. Uh, that was actually approved at the last hearing, uh, and then to move forward with just a vehicle storage lot at this location here. Uh, today, the property consists of five separate parcels held under common ownership. They're gonna be consolidated into a single parcel as part of this project. That's gonna total a little over five acres in area. And what that allows is, obviously, you see here quite a bit of a pavement, a total of four hundred and six vehicle, uh, spaces that would allow for storage. Um, and perimeter fencing around, uh, for security purposes around, um, the entire proximity, uh, premises as well as an electronic gate. Uh, the site will also feature lighting, landscaping and stormwater management improvements. The stormwater management improvements were designed to meet, uh, both the city and state standards as well as federal standards. Um, the state, uh, on the state end, we did, um, we are required to receive an alteration of train permit. Uh, we did receive comments from the Alteration of Train Bureau and have, uh, revised the plans. Uh, resubmitted them to both the state and to the city earlier this week. Um, addressing, uh, all comments from D P W Engineering and, um, and, and the Alteration of Train Bureau as well. Uh, basically, the treatment system, uh, treatment system consists of two treatment trains. Uh, the first, uh, which takes the majority of flow from the site is, uh, sent into an underground chamber system for detention. Which outlets to a grass line treatment swale for treatment. Uh, the second is a smaller portion of the site is collected and conveyed to a, another chamber system. This one's designed to actually infiltrate, which allows and provides for as much groundwater recharge volume as possible. Again, keeping in line with all the regulations that are at play here. Um, both, uh, systems actually discharge directly to, uh, a closed drainage system on West Glenwood Street through a new pipe here. That system was improved fairly recently, um, along with a, uh, recent project, which is another storage lot for vehicles, uh, at this location here. Um, basically, the system in tandem, the two, the two different, uh, chamber systems will allow a total reduction, uh, in peak flow rates. Um, to all, uh, abutting properties in downstream areas in all storms, uh, the two, ten, fifty and one-hundred. to all abutting properties in downstream areas in all storms, the two, ten, fifty and one hundred. Again, I think that's very important to note that it's not just, that's after construction. But during construction, we've also created a comprehensive erosion and sedimentation control plan. Again, there's a lot of standards that are associated with this up at the state level as well as with the city to protect all of the abutting properties during construction, not just afterwards. One of DPW's specific concerns was how does the system react in a one hundred year storm? We better detail that in our response in revised plans here. Essentially, what we did was create a few additional chambers, provide a little bit more storage volume just to mitigate the storm, the higher storm there in a hundred years. I doubt DPW has had a chance to review it because we did just resubmit this this week, but I think we're pretty confident that 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 will address their concern. And then along with all these other improvements, as I mentioned, there is landscaping that's shown on this plan here. You can see there's actually a couple residential properties that still remain off of West Glenwood. And there's a forty foot buffer associated with that. You can see this is the proposed tree line. So, you know, it's at the minimum, it's going to be about double what's required there, about eighty feet. And obviously, it gets wider up in the the northern area here. I'd also just like to point out that these houses are about twenty to forty feet lower. The the land slopes, this this point is higher and this is is lower. And slope's pretty good from West Glenwood down to DW Highway. We are proposing two waivers with this plan. They're actually the exact same waivers that were proposed and approved with the last project here. They are for existing, location of existing conditions within one thousand feet of the site and then also providing landscaping with it for every ten parking spaces. I've detailed those, the criteria for those waivers in letters, be happy to talk about them in more detail. But essentially, you know, the in terms of the landscaping, it's just very important for this type of use to be able to during winter operations, when they're plowing and moving vehicles around and have a big open, you know, lane to to do so. So we've tried to add in as much landscaping as possible, kind of creating the same amount that would be required if additional islands were required, but just doing it in a way that worked better for the site and the use that we're going to have here. Lastly, we did have a chance to review the staff report prior to the hearing. There is one stipulation that I would ask the board to reconsider, and that's stipulation number seven, which says cars cannot be unloaded to the lot at the site on West Glenwood Street or from Daniel Webster Highway. I would ask that the board reconsider that to just remove the first part of that stipulation, which says cars can't be loaded to or from the site on the property itself. I I think it makes sense to leave the stipulation maybe in terms of West Glenwood and DW Highway. You know, certainly they wouldn't be doing that anyway. But my understanding of the reason why that stipulation was put on there in the first place is when when these folks are moving forward with their storage lot, they actually had to go to the zoning board. They're in a different zone and had to get a variance for the use. The zoning board put that on as a requirement with their approval. So that's kind of carried forward onto onto this project. Obviously, there's some pretty stark differences between that property and this one. Number one being just the sheer size of this, plenty of room for, you know, a trailer to come onto the site, maneuver around and and load and unload in a number of different areas, you know, certainly was designed that way on purpose. Second is that at the time, this, keep in mind that this property, there was a single family home over in this area. So this property was actually surrounded by residential development on two sides, you know, over here and over here. Obviously, this area is trending much more commercial these days, and I'm sure it's probably just a matter of time before these other properties here are redeveloped. But there's a pretty healthy buffer there between that, those residential uses in this in this site. Now, the Ross Common doesn't intend to do a lot of loading or unloading activities at the site. They certainly just want to have the option to in the future. So it's not something like they're going to be getting deliveries there on a weekly basis or something like that. That's not their intention at this point in time. Again, I think they're just looking to have that flexibility in the future. This site's really intended just for employee use, delivery personnel. You know, the general public will not really be coming up here. There's really no reason for that. So I guess with all of that said, we're happy to turn it over to the board here for questions and happy to answer anything you want or go into more detail on the waivers or or anything else you see that need to do so. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Only question I had was just, I assume the site is is secured at night? This is a secured site with like a gate and stuff like that? So cars riding around that aren't supposed to be there, aren't, don't have access, so.
That is absolutely correct. It's going to have a security fence. It's going to have an electronic gate. There is basically security level lighting is what I would say in new posts and stuff like that. So you're absolutely right. No one's going to be able to get up there without, you know, short of driving through the fence or breaking in somehow.
Okay, yeah, thanks. Other questions, Mr. Peterson?
Yes, I just want clarification when you were speaking about the unloading on the site. Are you asking that that entire stipulation be struck from the report? About the loading specificity?
I I think, you know, that's certainly one way to do it. We'd be happy with that. I think really what we're after is just getting rid of the first part of it that says, you know, removing the part that says it can't be loaded or unloaded at the site. If you'd like to leave on the stipulation that they can't use West Glenwood or DW Highway, certainly that would be amenable to us.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant?
Weber?
Go ahead, Mr. Weber.
Okay. So you said security lighting would, people that live below those two parcels, would they be able to see those lights on any part of the property? Because of they're looking up at the property or that might shine on, would that splash onto the properties?
So I, you know, I'm sure there could be, you know, some clearing through the trees or something, particularly in the wintertime that someone might be able to see up through. I mean, we have an eighty foot wooded buffer here that's going to remain. It is pretty thick in there. There are a number of evergreens and things like that. The lights themselves, really, there's not, let me get back to that plan. There's really, I think, the only ones that are at risk of potentially seeing are maybe these couple right here. But again, they're also, you know, twenty to forty feet lower. So they'd be looking up, but I think it would be pretty tough to see. I think it would be heavily shielded. I can't say for certain, you know, they wouldn't see any bit of that light, but certainly it fits within the regulations in terms of light trespass on the neighboring properties and that sort of thing.
Yeah, and and things like this, what, because the security, they're going to be on all night long. If need be, would you be amenable to putting a shield on those, that side of the property so that nobody can see down there, would not be able to see that light?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, we could definitely put some shields on on a number of the light posts there that that might be at risk for that. Absolutely.
That would be great. It really does help. Because, you know, as a homeowner, they light look staring in when they're trying to watch a TV or have dinner and there they got this glaring light there. It may not seem like it's going to hurt, but it it really can be a nuisance to them. The only other thing I was. I would, now, did you try to go to the to appeal this, that ruling for offloading on, you know, cars can't be, did you go to the and try to get that part amended through the, get a waiver? Through to get this change for you? Because they put it on there for a purpose, so it would be cleaner if you went to them, the the appeals board and, you know.
Just just to clarify, we didn't have to go to the zoning board at all. In fact, this wasn't a stipulation. If you remember last fall when this project was approved, it was for an auto body shop and the vehicle storage. It was not a stipulation that was actually put on that approved project. And and so because we're in a different zone than the other property, we didn't actually have to go to the zoning board. That was not put on by the zoning board. It was, my understanding, I guess, put on by the zoning board on the adjacent project. And and for whatever reason added to the stipulations here. So, you know, again, at the time, there was residences next door on two sites and that sort of thing. And I think certainly the unloading and loading can be done on a portion of the site far enough away from the residential portion here where it wouldn't be disruptive.
Good.
Were you also?
Thank you.
Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I guess I I I made best direct this question to to Mr. Hudson. There was a pretty substantial document submitted just two days ago, about a hundred and fifty page drainage report. And I I didn't know if engineering was was satisfied with with comments. Because I think we have in our packet, we got the April twenty six comments from the applicant's engineer. And then we got some supplemental information via email with an additional hundred and fifty pages. And I I guess I just want to make sure that that staff is satisfied with 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 this. And I'll I'll leave it there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, yes, um, yes, we're comfortable with conditional approval referencing that they need to address our comments. I mean, the vol- volume of the number of pages really is a result of a a print of a storm my report. So it'll take us some time to go through, but we're we're fairly comfortable that they they will be able to address our previous comments.
Okay, Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I might be getting confused with versions of the staff report on this one. Or are we still referencing the May sixth, twenty twenty one staff report?
I can clarify that. Yes, you are still referencing the May sixth, twenty twenty one staff report. There was a clarification put in the very first page indicating that the zoning variance that Mr. Chisholm spoke to was was done on the opposite lot. And I think the discussion today, allowing them to unload or on their own lot is is reasonable. But, I mean, obviously, you don't want to be taking car top carriers on Daniel Webster Highway and doing those kind of things. So if we just eliminate a portion of that, then that that's really the only change that we need to worry about. So that would be stipulation number seven. So maybe cars cannot be unloaded on West Glenwood Street or from, but Danny whips the highway, if that's reasonable.
Okay, and and then, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. And I I guess my only other follow up to that would be, are there any other references to dates with regard to engineering comments that that need to be modified? Or is the April twenty eighth memo from 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 Peter still still valid?
Yes, I I can answer that. That's still valid. He hasn't had a chance to respond to our responses yet, so that original date is still good.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great. Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, it sounds like Mr. Ballinger may be going through the stipulations, trying to make adjustments. If that's the case, one one thing I would suggest we add on your number fifteen, where it references as-built plans. This is driveways, utilities and landscaping. I would add drainage to that list of items.
Right.
And and also, just for the record, the state actually requires that we are on site when they're putting in those chamber systems, obviously before they're buried, just to make sure there's no issues. It was done per plan. And there's statements that we have to file, so no issues with that change at all.
Anything else, Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, thank you. Further, in number four, just the way the the stipulation is drafted, it says the previous previous approval will be revoked in favor of tonight's proposal. If they're going to put this note on the plan, I think it should just read revoked in favor of the proposal for a vehicle storage. Or, in other words, not 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 include the word tonight.
Yeah. So it's a revoked in favor of the proposal for.
Yes.
Yeah, just remove the word tonight, replace it with the.
Right.
Yeah.
That's good.
Thanks. Anything else?
No, Mr. Chair, thank you.
All right, anybody else from the board have any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, sorry to interrupt, but I did, I just received a message from the applicant that the lights are actually going to be either on timers or on sensors of some sort, so they will not be on all night.
Okay, great. Appreciate that. All right, third, any other questions on the board? I'm going to go ahead and open the hearing to the public. Is there anybody in the public wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan or have a question of the plan? And go ahead and unmute, state your name and address for record, please. Hearing none? Lyndon, do you see any? Okay, great. So I'll give the board one more opportunity, ask any questions of the applicant or the or the planning staff while we're in the hearing. Okay, hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. So we have in front of us this plan. We've seen the site a few times here. This is a modification. An auto body shop and going just to the the storage. Everything looks to be in order on my end. And just as a reminder, anybody making notes about the 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 emotion, we need to address the two waivers at the front. And then Mr. Hudson had a good point that stipulation number four, the word tonight should probably be changed to the. And then stipulation number seven, it seems like there's been some agreement from a few of us that that might want to strike unload, strike at the site from that. And then, and I think Mr. Hudson had a good comment about under stipulation number fifteen, adding the drainage design. When you want to have any discussion here in the meeting, but or have any thoughts, Mr. Weber? Anybody want to make a motion?
Sure, I I I think Ed beat me, but I'll 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 take it.
Go ahead.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion. Pardon me, to approve new business item eight twenty one dash zero zero seven two, owner Rose Common Investments LLC, location L West Glenwood Street and one seventeen and L West Hobart Street. Finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NRO one ninety dash one forty six D. Subject to the following conditions. Number one, with respect to the waiver, shall read is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Condition number two, shall read is granted, finding that the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number three, as written. Stipulation number four, shall read prior to the chair signing the plan, the October twenty second, twenty twenty planning approval for an auto body shop will be revoked in favor of the proposal for a vehicle storage yard. Conditions five through six, as stipulated in the staff report. Stipulation number seven shall read cars cannot be unloaded at the site on West Glenwood Street or from the Daniel Webster Highway. Stipulations eight through fourteen, as written in the staff report. Stipulation fifteen shall include the following language. Prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy and as-built plan locating all driveways, utilities and drainage shall be completed by a professional New Hampshire licensed engineer or surveyor and submitted to the planning and engineering departments. The rest of stipulation fifteen shall be as written in the staff report. Stipulation sixteen, as written in the staff report.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Ballinger to approve eight twenty one dash zero zero seven two with stipulations as stated. Do we have a second on that? Any further discussion? Okay, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Pat Leclair?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Ian Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes six to zero.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Well, moving on, so next up, new business site plan, eight twenty one dash zero zero seven four. This is Allah Mock Properties LLC owner application and acceptance of proposed site plan. It could directly four thousand six hundred and fifty square foot convenience store with gas station. This property is located at four fifty two Amherst Street. And again, this, I think, was just postponed from the May sixth meeting, so we don't believe we've taken jurisdiction of this application at this point. So first up would be a motion as to whether this is ready for us to take jurisdiction.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to accept jurisdiction over new business site plan, case number eight twenty one dash zero zero seven four Allah Mock Properties LLC. Property located at four fifty two Amherst Street.
Okay, so that motion to take jurisdiction by Mr. Ballinger, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. We've been up there. Any further discussion? Okay, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Ian Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes six to zero.
So do we have somebody from the applicant that wants to present this case?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair. Another members of the board. My name is John Smolak with the firm of Smolak and Bond, twenty one High Street, North End of Mass, attorney for the applicant, TMC CF, New England LLC. Participating with me this evening are certain members of the project team, some of whom you may hear from this evening, including Chris Tumula, our project manager with Greenman Peterson. Also with us is Heather Montecup of GPI, the Project Traffic Engineer, as well as Don Johnson, Senior Project Manager with Cumberland Farms. As you're aware, the board is, the applicant's requesting new site plan approval to allow for the construction of a convenience store and gas station to be owned and operated by Cumberland Farms. As mentioned in the staff report, the application may look familiar to you because we were before the board with this project last September when the board voted to grant approval of the site plan as well as a conditional use permit for gas station use. In addition, the applicant had was also granted a use variance by the zoning board of Justin back in June of last year. The reason we're back for you this evening is because after the board granted approval of the project, we expected the New Hampshire DOT to approve the relocation of the existing Townsend West curb cut, which is a controlled access right of way that was shown in the approved plan we'll show to you shortly. However, based on extensive discussions with the DOT, we're unable to secure that approval. So as a result, we've moved the curb cut located on Townsend West to the very rear site and outside of the controlled access right of way, which from a traffic perspective really moves driveway further away from the signalized intersection and actually improves the approach. But as a result of the change of driveway relocation or location, we also need to reconfigure the site plan to accommodate new access point on Townsend West, which we'll show to you shortly. If we could have Kristen Muller of GPI share the screen to show existing conditions aerial.
All set, John?
Great, thank you. So the property, as you see in the center of the site, four fifty two Amherst Street is approximately a little over one point one five acres in size. As you see, located at the corner of Amherst Street and Townsend West. And as you know, the site's the location of the former country tavern restaurant, which announced its permanent closure last year. Existing property, as you see, includes the forty one hundred square foot restaurant structure, existing structure with parking to the rear. And the site's located entirely within the park industrial zoning district as well as the mixed use overlay district. The plan also shows the existing access points, which are on Amherst Street at the bottom of the screen. And at about the midpoint of the lot off of Townsend West is the second existing curb cut, which was the subject of my earlier comments in terms of the controlled access right of way. And so the property itself, as you see, is really entirely surrounded by retail office and other commercial uses. If we could just go to the next slide, which is the approved project. And this is the project that was previously approved by the board back in September of last year, which included the construction of an approximate five thousand square foot colonial retail style convenient storage will place the existing restaurant building. The project also involved the installation of a row of five fuel dispensers or ten fueling positions that were aligned to be parallel with Amherst Street. And in addition to that, in terms of landscaping, was to be upgraded and enhanced throughout the property along Amherst and Townsend West as well as to the rear of the property. The changes to the project, if we can go to the next slide to the new site plan, and which were mentioned in the staff report, include that basically what we were doing is rotating or turning all of the site improvements ninety degrees clockwise so that the convenience store is facing east and is located between the dispensers and Townsend West. And this change resulted in reducing the convenience store footprint to approximately four thousand six hundred and fifty square feet or a reduction of about three hundred and fifty square feet in size. This building size also resulted in the reduction of parking space count from twenty five to twenty three, excluding the parking at the pumps. This change also resulted in the reduction of the number of gas dispensers to four, which when it was previously five, and the reduction of fueling positions to eight when it was previously ten. And as you can see from the site plan, the Townsend West driveway access has been relocated to the rear of the site and outside of the DOT's controlled access right of way. As similar to the approval by the board last year, project won't include any driveway facilities, but the proposed operations are twenty-four hours, seven days per week, again, as they were approved last year. Additionally, we also wanted to note that several weeks ago, our team met on site with several of the abutters to the property and walked them through the changes. We won't intend to speak for those abutters, but they seem satisfied that we addressed their concerns. And in fact, with the relocation of the curb cut on Townsend West further back from the intersection, they indicated that the new layout works much better from that, which was originally approved from both a safety and an aesthetics point of view. Also noted that we've requested two waivers, which are the same waivers which were requested back last September and which were approved last September first. As to lighting, section one eighty eighty nine A provides that light levels should not exceed point two foot candles at any property line. And as will be discussed shortly by our project engineer, we have slight exceedances both adjacent to the proposed underground tanks and along our site entrances for public safety purposes, which we feel are reasonable. Second, section one ninety one seventy two E one states that all sides of a principal building that directly face an abutting public street shall feature at least one customer entrance. We're proposing a single entrance facing Amherst Street as shown on the plans. And we think the entrance is reasonable since parking is mostly within close proximity to the front door where most people park. And also, a single customer entrance is really designed to enhance safety by ensuring that the ability, ensuring the ability of the employees to closely monitor persons entering and exiting the convenience store building. So with that said, I recognize the board has a lot after this matter on the agenda, but I want to turn the discussion over to Chris Tumula. We'll very briefly walk you through some of the details in site plan and the elevation plans.
Thanks.
Alright, thanks, John. Good evening, everybody. For the record, Chris Tumula, I'm a project manager with Greenman Peterson with our office located at forty fourth Stiles Road up here in Salem, Hampshire. So what I'd like to do is, John gave a pretty good overview of what's going on here. As he mentioned, the building's being reduced from forty nine ninety six down to forty six fifty. We're reducing parking by from twenty five spaces down to twenty three, reducing fuel islands from five down to four. And we've, you know, like he said, we rotated the building essentially nine degrees. So the similarities to the previous plans are that the fuel tanker of the fuel tank locations, the they're two twenty thousand gallon double wall fiberglass underground fuel storage tanks. Those are essentially in the same location as the previous plan. The driveway location along one oh one A, that's in the exact same location as the previously approved plans. And as John mentioned, the new driveway location on Townsend West was moved down approximately a hundred, hundred and fifty feet from the original driveway location, which was generally located in here. We have twenty three parking spaces. There's a row along the side of the building or facing Amherst Street. There's a row in front of the building, including an ADA accessible parking space and then employee parking spaces over by the fenced dumpster enclosure. We are still providing a loading zone, which is generally in the same location, but essentially rotated ninety degrees from where it was before. We have maintained the existing trees that were of high concern of the abutters at our initial meeting. We've actually noted on the landscaping plan that the trees in this general area are to remain. The previous plan had a substantial retaining wall which wrapped around the side and rear of the building. We've now reduced the retaining wall to just basically the side and rear of the building because the grades along Townsend West to to Amherst Street are substantially different. There's about a twelve to forty foot elevation difference across the site, which is the reason for the retaining wall. From a gradient drainage perspective, we're still maintaining the same type of drainage system. We have a closed drainage system consisting of deep sump, putty catch basins, a watertight underground detention system with an oil control structure located at the driveway with an ultimate connection point along Townsend West. You may recall that there was a, there's an existing head wall located here. We are removing that head wall and putting a new drain manhole structure there, which will provide not only a connection from our onsite drainage system, but it will also provide a connection from the existing drainage well that runs along the abutting property, which ultimately got to that existing head wall in existing conditions. As part of our stormwater plan, we have a long-term operation maintenance plan for all the design components. We have a reduction in the peak rate of runoff for the site. All in all, again, it's essentially the same type of system that was previously approved as part of the original plans. The utilities, again, same type of connections, we're maintaining the sewer connection that was shown in the original plans with a saddle connection along the existing sewer line on one oh one A. We're providing the water, gas and underground electric with a new transformer pad along the, along Townsend West. As John mentioned, we do have a substantial landscaping plan. As I mentioned earlier, you know, we've noted that the existing trees to remain are basically all the trees that are in the rear here, which is consistent with what the discussions that we had with the abutters. With the building rotated, the back of the building is facing Townsend West. So what we did is we provided a staggered row of some street trees to provide a buffer to the building. In addition, as you'll see on the architectural plans, we've added some full windows on the back of the building. We've wrapped the stone veneer that goes around, that's typically on the side in front of the building. We've wrapped that around the back of the building, basically to enhance the rear of the building, so it doesn't look like a rear of a building. In addition to these street trees along Townsend West, we still have a row of street trees along one oh one A, which is again consistent with what was previously approved last year. Here is the lighting plan. So as John mentioned, we do have some foot candle levels that are slightly higher at the property line for the underground fuel storage tanks as well as along the rear of the property. It should be noted that this photometric plan does not include the existing tree line that's out there, which would obviously have a significant impact on the light levels crossing of the property lines. So although we are requesting a waiver for the light trespass, we do anticipate that the light levels are actually less than what's currently shown on the proposed plan. Again, as John mentioned, we are now doing a fuel canopy with four fueling islands. This canopy is again consistent with what was approved last year. Instead of having five islands, we have four. It's going to be your standard Cumberland Farms canopy with the green band along the bottom and a white fascia, similar to every Cumberland Farms that's in the surrounding areas. We're providing a floor plan that shows the customer experience with the coffee stations, the beer cave, the walk-in coolers, everything you would expect at a typical Cumberland Farms. From a, from an architectural standpoint, since the initial submission back in March, the building was modified slightly and the board should have received revised plans submitted on Monday. The changes are basically in response to minor checklist items relative to the roof pitch, the roof pitch, as well as building materials. In addition to the checklist items, we've also received comments from the engineering department, which we believe are a minor in nature and we have no issue resolving. So the new building still consists of a New England style architecture with dormer peaks along the front. Architectural shingles and a stone veneer around the side. And we've updated the the architecture to wrap around the rear of the building, like I mentioned, with the stone base. The building will be consistent with most of the Commonwealth Farms that you see in the area. Like I said, it's your standard Commonwealth Farms with the stone veneer, the green band, and it's a very classy building. In addition, we have upgraded the building facade to include fiber cement board siding and cedar shakes instead of vinyl siding that was previously shown on the plans that were submitted back in March. And we've also reduced the building height from thirty two, thirty two feet, four inches to just under twenty seven feet to comply with the slope roof requirement in the county cities checklist. Lastly, what we do is we have a photometric plan. So this is the existing country tavern along the top. A photometric representation of the proposed Commonwealth Farms development on the bottom. That's facing, that's standing on Amherst Street. And then this is facing the existing driveway on Townsend West, obviously existing additions. You see the parking lot. And then here's what I was mentioning with regards to the rear of the building. So we have some full windows, the dormer is wrapped the stone base around the back of the building and we provide the tree and some low growth plantings to provide a decent buffer from the roadway. In addition, you can see sort of in the background here, we've extended the height of the fencing to hide the HVAC systems. Typically, you have a four foot fencing behind the building. We've extended it to eight feet to provide additional buffering since it does butt the road system. With the revised plans and the architecture and the comments that we received from both the city engineering department as well as the checklist items, we've looked at them. We're in the process of responding to them, but we don't see any major hurdles. And in reality, the plan changes are going to be extremely minor. And we'd be happy to answer any questions tonight and hopefully the board provides us approval tonight. We would have no problem providing the condition of approval with the outstanding items.
Thanks a lot. So anybody from the board have any questions of the applicant regarding the revised plan here?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was wondering if the applicant could provide just a little bit of context to New Hampshire DOT involvement? Because we've seen a number of applications on Amherst Street recently in this general, you know, area, western part of the city near the Merrimack Line. And I don't ever remember DOT jurisdiction kind of coming up in those discussions. It was my understanding Amber Street was effectively within the urban compact, used to be the old designation. I just would appreciate some elaboration on that point, just so if we need to be aware of any other developments in this area where there should be consultation with the state.
Sure, absolutely. You know, we can, we can definitely discuss that. Heather Montecup from our traffic division would better answer those questions.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, I'm Heather Monacup with Greenman Peterson and we're the traffic engineers for the proposed project. What happened on this site is Mr. Ballinger is absolutely correct. We do not need an NHDOT driveway permit for this roadway. We did submit to planning and community assistance because federal funds were used to improve Amherst. were used to improve Amher Street at one point in time. And so to protect the federal investment, DOT does get to make comments on the project for that. What happened on this project was there is a controlled access right-of-way along Amher Street that actually wraps down to Townsend West. We were proposing in the previous proposal to move the driveway about 30 feet closer to the signal. So it was moving towards the signal uptowns in west, which put the driveway in the controlled access right-of-way. So in order to do that, we had to go through the surplus land process. We made that submission to DOT in March of 2020. We got approved by the board in September and on October, we found out that that controlled access right-of-way was probably not going to go through. We ended up having a meeting on January 5th, 2021 to discuss it. And on January 11th, we actually received a letter saying that the DOT Bureau of Right-of-Way would be unable to grant our request. So because of that, we went through a number of iterations of the site plan, probably six of them, until we came up with the proposal that is before you today. So DOT's involvement was really to provide comments to the city, which they did from Bureau of Planning and Community Assistance. But really, it was because of the Bureau of Right-of-Way and the surplus land process that we had to go through to move the driveway.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification on that. And 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 I I guess that's helpful for just to know for for context purposes, if we need to deal with any other developments on Amher Street. So we, I think we just had one at the last meeting. So I, again, I'm just trying to, for for, I'm kind of talking out loud myself, but if if DOT consultation is always necessary, given the prior federal aid involvement. So thank you. Thank you, Ms. Monica. Appreciate your your testimony.
Mr. Weber?
Thank you. The in and out arrows that are on Amherst. I have talked before with engineering on these, when they are put on a high temperature paint would be advantageous so that it stays there because of the amount of traffic on Amherst and so they don't lose their arrow pointing ability or be wiped out because of the type of paint. So would you guys be amenable to the high temperature paint on those three arrows?
Yeah, absolutely. We actually, the, we do have a stop bar located here and we actually are calling out that to be thermoplastic stop bar. So we, yeah, no, not a problem. So we will also make sure that the the arrows are a note to be thermoplastic as well.
Okay, the second question. And this usually, Scott usually talks about this. A truck with a landscaping truck coming in, would they be able to make this turn? Or also is it diesel? You know, diesel is on its way out, but would a truck with a landscape trailer be able to make, you know, fill up and then make the turn going out to Amherst?
Yeah, we didn't specifically show a truck turning for a landscaping vehicle, but we have provided truck turn plan for both the City Nashville Fire Truck as well as the Kamala Farms Fuel Tanker Truck, both of which can easily navigate in and out of the site, which are larger vehicles. So they're not the small vehicles above my issue.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions by the board for the applicant? Okay, hearing done. I will go ahead and open the hearing to the public. Is anybody in the audience or from the public wishing to speak in opposition or concerned with the plan? Have a question? Please go ahead and unmute and state your name and address for the record. I'm not hearing any. Do you see any hands or anything?
Thank you.
Won't hear anybody, so. Okay, at this point, I will give the board one more chance to ask questions of the applicant while we're in the hearing. Mr. Weber?
Yes, it's for staff, number five. Number five date?
May 4th.
May 4th?
Yes.
Any further questions? Okay, hearing done. I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing and move into the meeting. So pretty straightforward. So previously approved application. My opinion, kind of, maybe a better solution, a little bit smaller footprint on the site. Seems to be well laid out and pretty consistent with the rest of the earlier plan. So nothing too too different here. Mr. Hudson, did you have a comment or anything?
Yeah, I do. I mean, it's more of a question, Mr. Chair, but I looked through the conditions and one of the conditions references the previous approval. I don't have those in front of me. I didn't see them in the staff report copied. I just want to ensure the applicant previously committed to making a $14,000 contribution to the Amher Street Corridor Fund. And I just wanted to ensure that that's still intended and included. If it's one of the original conditions, then I suppose it carries forward, but I
Yeah, I mean, staff can probably comment on that. Maybe from staff?
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't hurt to add it as a stipulation again.
Okay, what was the previous amount, 14,000?
Yes, 14, 14,000 to the Amher Street Corridor account. And I think on the other ones, we've drafted that as prior to the chair signing the plan.
Thanks, Mr. Hudson. Any further comments, discussion in the meeting by the board? Okay. Hearing done. Anybody from the board want to make a motion?
Weber?
Go ahead, Mr. Weber.
I'm going to try.
Okay.
New business site plan A 21-0074 Allah Make-A Properties LLC at 452 Amher Street. With two waivers, the request for waiver 190, 172 E one, which requires all sides of a principal building that directly face a budding public street featuring at least one customer entrance is granted. Finding the waiver will not be contrary spirit and ten of the regulation. Two requests for waiver 190, 89, which requires light levels not exceed point two foot candles in certain property lines depicted on the site plan is granted. Finding the waiver will not be contrary spirit and ten of the regulation. Number three, four as written. Five, prior to the chair signing of the plan, all comments and emails of Joe Mendola, street construction engineer, dated May 4th, 2021, should be addressed to the satisfaction of the engineering department. Six through 11 as written. 12, the applicant has agreed to pay 14,000 to the Amher Street Corridor prior to the chair signing. Hope I said that right.
Yeah, so so that motion approved by Mr. Weber with the 12 stipulations as indicated, including the additional stipulation of the applicant making a contribution to the Amher Street Corridor Fund of the amount 14,000 dollars. And that piece submitted prior to the chair, myself signing the plan. Do we have a second on that?
Second, Mr. Chair?
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion? Okay, can we get a roll vote on that, please?
You people are a bunch of fucking idiots.
The answer is yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch? Mr. Hirsch, I think you're muted.
Yes.
Right then. Pass is six to zero.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Moving on, we have a new business A 20-0205. This is GMAC Properties LLC. Application and acceptance of proposed 30-unit multifamily townhouses along with associated site improvements. This property is located at 57911 Domain Street. Again, this was an application that was postponed from our May 6 meeting, so we don't have a this has not been taken into jurisdiction, so we would need to take jurisdiction of this application first. Does anybody have a chance to take a look at it and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for jurisdiction?
Weber?
Go ahead, Mr. Weber.
New business, that we take jurisdiction of new business A 20-0205 site plan.
So the motion to take jurisdiction of A 20-0205 by Mr. Weber, do we have a second on it? Second, looks like Mr. Hirsch is waving. Yeah, okay, so we got a second there. Any further discussion by the board?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Ballinger, yeah.
I I I I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna repeat myself slightly. I just from from the last application, I'm just a little bit confused as to what involvement New Hampshire DOT has in Amher Street projects. And I don't know if this needs to be a checklist item for anything that has driveway access on Amber Street going forward, where there needs to be some sort of form of consultation with with the state. I understand this isn't the same type of application as as the one we just heard, but I I I think just moving forward, it would be nice to know what the parameters are and to who some of the the external players may be in the review process.
Yeah, okay. I don't know, staff has any concern with taking jurisdiction at this point, from what we know? I'm not seeing any. Okay, all right. Thanks, Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion on that? All right, let's get a vote on the jurisdiction.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Ian Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes six to zero.
Okay, so we have jurisdiction. Do we have somebody here from the applicant that wants to present us?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Chad Brannan, civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. Our office is located at 206 Elm Street in Milford, New Hampshire. With me tonight is Marcelo Borges with GMAC Properties and Derek Roach with Vanessa and Associates. And together, we will be representing GMAC Properties LLC this evening with their application before the board to construct a 30-unit multifamily housing development over tax map parcels H82, H83, H128, and H141. The subject properties have a physical, have physical addresses of 57911 and 11 Domain Avenue. And if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I would like to share my screen this evening.
Sure.
Domain Avenue is unique as it currently consists of a single group of single-family homes that are essentially abutted by industrial uses to the north and northwest, condominium complexes to the south and southeast, and then retail uses along Amher Street to the east. So taking a look at the existing conditions plan, the residential uses on Domain Avenue are also located in a split zone where the lower part of the street towards the airport, which is located in this area here, is zoned park industrial and is in is in the mixed-use overlay district. And then the upper part of the street to the north towards Amher Street is in the general business district. Taking a look at the existing conditions of the four properties that we have before you this evening, they're bordered by this orange weighted line. You can see on the south side of the site, we have H128. That property consists of 0.437 acres of land. This lot is currently vacant as the single-family house, which once occupied the site, was demoed about a year or two ago. But there are some existing improvements on the site that you can see on the plan that I have before you. You have the paved driveway here on the south side. And then you have, you know, a shed and then the home was situated generally in this location here. Parcel H141, H82, and H83 are currently occupied by single-family homes. You can see those, those are hatched in the red hatch here that we have before you. Those properties consist of 0.527 acres of of land on H141, which is situated here. And then H82 is 0.416 acres of land just to the north. And then the last parcel all the way to the north is H83, consists of 0.410 acres of land. The properties on the south side of the site, H128 and H141, again, are in the park industrial district and mixed-use overlay. And then the properties on the north side, H82 and H83, are situated in the general business district. The topography on the site is generally pretty mild. The properties slope for the most part towards a Domain Avenue to the east. And the soils on site consists of a Windsor urban land complex, which is a in excessively well-drained soil. The proposal for this project consists of consolidating or merging the four parcels into one property shown in the green hatch that we have here on this plan. That property would consist of 1.79 acres of land and would allow for the redevelopment of of this site into a 30-unit townhouse-style development. This is depicted on sheet four of our plans that I have in front of you now. And this, the name of this project would be Divine Peace Condominium. The individual units within this project would consist of three bedrooms with a total square footage of approximately 1,600 square feet. This includes a 230-square-foot garage area. The buildings have been situated on the property to face each other. And what that allows for is all the parking access and really the activities, you know, within the garages would face each other, would be buffered from the surrounding uses. The layout has been designed to have two curb cuts along Domain Avenue. That's depicted on the plan here. So the first curb cut is situated on the northeast corner of the site. And then on the southwest corner, we have, would have our second curb cut. So that allows for ample ingress and egress for residents, deliveries, and certainly emergency response personnel. The site has been designed to to provide for safe pedestrian and vehicular traffic and access. This includes adequate turning movements for daily use and the emergency response vehicles. We did provide a turning template to the fire department for their review, and it's my understanding they have signed off on this project. Each unit will have two dedicated exterior parking spots. And the property has been designed to provide for six visitor parking spaces. They're situated on the south side of the project in this location here. And the parking for this project does meet all city standards. On the south side of the project, we are also providing for a communal mill kiosk, as well as the dumpster location, which is a enclosed dumpster pad. And the surroundings would consist of a, a stockade fence, so I'm certainly meeting all the city requirements there as well. This project would be serviced by municipal sewer, Penetech Water, natural gas, and underground electric telephone and cable services. And other site improvements that we have included within the plan set include landscaping, lighting, drainage, and utility infrastructure. Taking a closer look at some of the details for this proposal, we are proposing some improvements along Domain Avenue for this project, which will include the construction of a sidewalk along the entire frontage of the product, of the property. We are also proposing some drainage improvements along Domain Avenue. That really consists of allowing the drainage from Domain Avenue and the proposed sidewalk to drain onto the site where we're going to, you know, mitigate the runoff there through some leaching structures along the frontage of the property. Along Domain Avenue, we are also proposing some street trees and the installation of a vinyl fence, just to provide additional buffering from the street. The lighting plans for this project, we have a lighting design included in the plan set. The lighting for this project really consists of utilizing building-mounted lights. Each unit will have entry lights, which will be decorative in style. And then above each garage will have a light installed. All the lighting has been designed to meet city standards. And the lighting design is what I would consider residential-grade, so it'll provide nice accent lighting throughout the project, but will not have a negative impact on, you know, certainly the quality of, of, or lifestyle of, of the people that will reside within the project. I'm just going back to grading plan. So the drainage design for this project consists of collecting and conveying all of the stormwater runoff from the improved areas to three main stormwater management areas. This includes infiltration, catch basins and trenches behind both of the buildings. So on the rear of the site, we have a leaching basin located here. And this is going to capture, you know, runoff from the rear of the building. And then we also have a stone leaching trench located in the north, or the, excuse me, the southwest corner of the site here. Along the front of the project, as I touched on, we have some leaching trenches proposed. And then the grading has been detailed pretty extensively along Domain Avenue to, to allow for this drainage to come in to the site and infiltrate appropriately. Because Domain Avenue does not have a closed drainage system currently, so we had to, you know, utilize the soil properties and, and mitigate those stormwater elements internally. The stormwater management design for this project also includes a, a chamber system, which will be constructed under the paved area between the two buildings. And this is, this will mitigate the majority of, of the improvements that we're proposing with this project. We have, over the last few months, gone through some pretty extensive reviews with the city staff to address review comments, which has included going through reviews with the city engineering department, the fire department, and then certainly comments from the community development office as well. To date, we believe we've addressed, you know, substantially addressed all of the comments and concerns with this project. And this has included agreeing to make a six thousand dollar donation to the Amber Street corridor. And that was requested by the engineering department as part of their review of this project. We have reviewed the staff memo prepared for tonight's meeting, and we have no issues with any of the staff recommendations or conditions. We just have one suggested revision to comment number three, which references an email from Mr. Mandola dated April eighteenth, and I believe the latest email from him is actually dated May fourth. And that just consists of one minor request to just add an additional sidewalk construction detail, really detailing, you know, the, the critical nature of the grading along Domain Avenue. And we certainly have no issues with that. We are requesting one waiver with this project. The waiver request is from section one ninety-two seventy-nine EE regarding the detailing of existing conditions on adjacent properties. I did submit a formal waiver request with the application. I think it details. It, it addresses our waiver request in detail, and I know the board has a lengthy agenda this evening. So I will go through that at the board's request if, if, if they feel that's appropriate. And we also submitted with this report because, or with this application, because we are in a mixed-use district, a site plan suitability report. That suitability report addresses all of the criteria from section one ninety-two-three E one. Again, because the property is situated in a mixed-use overlay district, we believe we thoroughly addressed the criteria outlined within that section, which really consists of seven criteria, and I'd be happy to go through that in, in detail as well, Mr. Chairman. We have submitted a pretty thorough response to all those criteria. It's our understanding and reviewing that with staff that we believe we, we, we do sufficiently address those criteria, but I would be happy to, to go into that as well. So with that said, and out of respect of the length of your meeting this evening so far, and I see the agenda that you have left to go through, we'd be happy to try to address any questions that the board may have at this time. I can show you some architectural renderings of the buildings if you would like. And we do have the traffic engineer here too, who helped us pull the project together. And again, that's Derek Roach from Vanessa and Associates. So we're here this evening to try to answer any questions that you may have. And, and certainly, we hope to, to obtain a conditional approval on this project. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Could, yeah, could you just bring up the architectural, just so we can see them? And then I might ask Mr. Roach, yeah, just to kind of give a quick overview of the traffic, if you don't mind. All right, so this is the.
So this is, this is an example rendering, or an architectural rendering of a portion of the building. So you can see there's, you know, varied roofline, rooflines proposed. We have, you know, varying colors and materials with some shake cedar-style vinyl shakes. And then, you know, typical clapboard vinyl siding. And then you can see the, the garages, and then the stairways are somewhat inset so to provide some good breakup of the facade of the building. We did submit, submit with the plan, you know, a detailed architectural set showing the floor plans and so on too of the buildings, and I could bring those up if you'd like to, Mr. Chairman. We do have one additional rendering that I'll try to bring up now. Just have to switch it over, I'm sorry. So this is a, a rendering from Domain Avenue, coming up from Amber Street. Just taking, it's kind of a perspective view, just looking into the project. And I think it gives a good, you know, a good feel for, you know, the type, the type of architectural elements that we're incorporating. And then it does show, you know, the landscaping that we're proposing, as well as some of the fencing along Domain Avenue as well.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Roach, did you want to just present that, your traffic results quickly? Yeah, that might be good.
Yeah, absolutely. For the record, my name is Derek Roach, professional engineer, senior transportation engineer with Vanessa Associates. So we did a memo, we put together a memo looking at some of the existing conditions and trip generation for the site. So we were able to find some counts from the NHDOT's permanent count stations that looked at volumes on Amherst Ave and Domain Avenue. And on Domain Avenue, volumes, there were three counts we looked at, I believe, and for the day, volumes ranged between a hundred and sixty to a hundred and ninety trips per day. Vehicles per day, sorry. And on Amherst Avenue, around thirty-eight thousand, forty-six thousand vehicles per day. And so then, as for the trip generation for the thirty units, we used IT to estimate the volumes. And it says we're going to have about a hundred and eighty-six vehicle trips per day, which sounds like a lot, seeing as it's about double what's there currently. But during the peak hours, we're, we're looking at fifteen trips and twenty trips per day, which equates to about one car every four minutes in the weekday morning peak hour, and one car every three minutes in the weekday evening peak hour, which is not going to be noticeable to the residents there today. And yeah, that's about all we did. As we don't, as the site doesn't produce seventy-five vehicle trips during the peak hours, we aren't required to do a full traffic impact report based on the City of Nashville guidelines. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks a lot. All right, at this point, I'd open it up to the board. Anybody from the board have any questions for the applicant on this application? Not seeing anybody from the board with questions. I guess at this point, then I'll open up to the public. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned of a question of the plan? Please go ahead and unmute, state your name and address for the record, and ask your question. Anybody? I would give the board then one more opportunity to ask any further questions of the applicant or staff while we're in the hearing. Mr. Weber?
Staff.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, just making sure my mic was on. Dates, so number three is May fourth.
Yes.
And four is March fifth, six is February first, seven is January sixth. Is that correct? Anything else?
I don't believe so.
Good.
Mr. Ballinger?
Yes, Mr. Chair, with respect to condition number four, I, I didn't hear it discussed. Is the applicant amenable to the six thousand dollar voluntary contribution towards the Amber Street Corridor Fund?
Um, yes, Mr. Ballinger, the applicant is amenable to that, and we have agreed to, to make that contribution per the condition. And I did mean to touch on this too. I just want to state for the record that we are not in a limited access or controlled access right away that extends into our property. So we don't have the same conditions or any concerns that were mentioned in the prior, prior application.
They, they, thank you, Mr. Mr. Brandon, and I, I, I think for clarification, I, I, I think that that might be a larger issue to, to, to staff. I just wanted to get out there. But I, I do appreciate your acknowledgement of, of, of the fact that that was not an identical situation. So thank you very much.
Any other questions by the board for the applicant in the hearing? Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing and move on to the meeting. So we have the development here in front of us. Looks pretty well laid out to me, pretty well covered by the applicant. You know, has most of the items we were looking for with the sidewalks and the corridor contributions. So I'm sort of in favor of it here. Happy to have any further discussion with the board, any comments, Mr. Weber?
Yes, I've been out to that site previous, and I really do like the construction that they've done on the other housing units in that area that they've done. So it's very good, clean, and good outfit.
Great, thanks. Any other comments by the board during the meeting? Okay, hearing none, I would ask, is there anybody willing to make a motion?
Weber?
Go ahead, Mr. Weber.
Okay, new business, A two zero zero two zero five site plan located at five, seven, nine, and eleven Durham Ave. Finding that the plan meets NRO one forty-six D with the first waiver request be with one ninety-two seventy-nine EE, which requires an existing condition plan is granted, finding the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and ten of the regulation. Two is written. Three amended to May fourth, twenty twenty-one. Date four through fourteen as stipulated.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. So we have that motion by Mr. Weber to approve this plan. Eight twenty dash zero two zero five with the get my wrong, stipulations that were here.
One.
It was fourteen stipulations.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
So do we have a second for that?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Ian Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes six to zero.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
All right, next up on our agenda, this is item number eight twenty-one dash zero zero seven one. East Hollis Street Acquisitions LLC owner, Michael Favor Property Possible Inc. applicant. Application and acceptance of proposed site plan amendment to NR twenty-two forty-one to add eight additional living units and add parking. The property is located at one-ten East Hollis Street. So if anybody from the board had a chance to take a look at this application and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to take jurisdiction over new business site plan, case number eight twenty-one dash zero zero seven one.
All right, so we have a motion to take jurisdiction for eight twenty-one dash zero zero seven one by Mr. Ballinger. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? Okay, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Ian Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes six to zero.
Okay, so we have jurisdiction. Do we have somebody here from the applicant that wants to present this case?
Yes, good evening. My name is Michael Malinowski. I'm with Allen and Major Associates. Our offices are located at four hundred Harvey Road in Manchester. We are the civil engineers and surveyors for the project. With me this evening, I also have Michael Favor from Property Possibles. I believe Bill Mandell is also here from the ownership side. We have Chris Lazott, project architect for the building, and we also have Stephen Perna for traffic. I can lead in if I can share my screen. Everybody see?
Yes.
So our project is located at one-ten East Hollis Street. It's the former Henry Hanger Building located at close to the intersection of Temple Street and East Hollis. As you can see by this figure right here, we had been before the board back in twenty nineteen. August eighth, to be exact, we received approval from the board to convert the existing Henry Hanger Building. Into eighty units of residential housing mixed between two and three bedroom units with. Increased parking in the rear. We are before you this evening. We had also received an amendment in two thousand twenty, one-year extension, so we still have active permits. We are actually before the board this evening for a slight amendment to the project to increase the units to. Eighty-eight. From the previous eighty units proposed. We are still proposing. As you can see, twenty parking spaces that were previously approved on the vacant parking area located on Temple Street. There's, we have forty-eight spaces over there. We also have twenty spaces which are in the same configuration as previously approved on the property itself. In addition to this, the owners have secured a long-term lease to construct an additional thirteen spaces. On a property located at ninety-four East Hollis Street. It is the rear portion of the Hertz rental car facility. That's there and you can see there's a small portion that abuts the city-owned land in the back. And this portion here is the Henry Hanger project here. For all intents and purposes, the project has pretty much remained the same other than a slight increase of units. We do have a minor reconfiguration of this space here. We've added a loading zone. For this space, originally, the building entrance was more in this location. Based on the new architectural layout for the building, the main entrance is in this location, so we have provided a loading zone for. Either Ubers or Amazon deliveries to come in and service the site. Entrance along. East Hollis Street will be reconstructed as previously approved. We also have the reconstruction of sidewalks along the entire length of East Hollis Street. That work was also previously approved under the plan and we are still continuing to do that. Additionally, in this zone here, this is all paved. We are proposing to install a new brick patio and the removal of the existing pavement here to provide more of a green space. In the front, and I know during the previous iterations. This abutment expressed concern of this fence. We are still providing the solid opaque fence in this location. To provide proper screening. As, as I will show later, we've also increased some of the landscaping in this area to provide an additional buffer. As part of the project, we have also provided a. Impact statement which Chris can. Go over as the project architect. For all intents and purposes, it is remain the same as what was previously approved. The intent of the project remains the same. It's a adaptive reuse of the existing hangar facility into a residential use. I would be happy to entertain any questions from the board.
Okay, thanks. So generally speaking, the, the, the can, the building footprint configuration is really not changing.
That is correct.
Parking is pretty much the same with the exception of a secured. Offsite, I guess, but it's adjacent to the building.
Yes.
For all practical purposes, and then you just have your loading dock change, but other than that, that's. Mostly what the difference is between this set of plans and the last ones we approved.
That's correct. The one other item is based on some checklist items, we've added some. Additional lighting.
Okay.
As you can. See in this picture, we do have some lighting that's being proposed for. This parking area here, since there isn't any lighting in the back of this building, we've provided lighting here. We've also added some additional. Light poles along this area to enhance this parking area. As well as the original wall pack lights that are here. And as you can see from this figure, one of the waiver requests that we are providing is. For an increase in light levels across the property line. So we do have a slight increase at the property line and part of that is. One, two, so that we can provide some light for a sidewalk. That we've had discussions with the city. There's proposal for some interface in this location between the new walkway that's being proposed by the city. So part of this lighting will actually help light this area. Unfortunately, it's offsite, so we will need a waiver for that. Additionally, in this area here, we have a slight increase in the lighting. But it's a similar thing, the existing, the proposed walkway will come through this area. So the little bit of extra light will actually provide some light to that walkway in that vicinity.
Okay, thank you. Anybody from the board have any questions for the applicant? Ed Weber here first.
Thank you. Actually, it's more for Dan Hudson. The crosswalk. Is while they're doing this work, would it be advantageous for the city or the. Applicant to put a, to improve on that crosswalk, you know, make it to, so it's gonna stay there and. That high temperature paint to, so that that crosswalk is, helps this site also.
Are you referring to the crosswalk across East Hollis Street?
Yes.
The signalized intersection?
Yes.
I know East Hollis was paved last year, so I believe that was replaced then. I don't know its current condition, I haven't been out there recently, but. But yeah, typically, typically we paint those and try to keep up with painting where we do the thermoplastic.
Okay, it's just, it's just that it's, they're gonna put the concrete there, you know, new pay sidewalk there. And, you know, there's, it's, it would dress up that area too. Maybe it's already done. I, I'm sorry, I didn't go out there and see it.
Yeah, I think the asphalt is kind of new out there right now. Mr. Hudson, did you have a comment too?
Yeah, I just. I wanted to ask the applicant if they'd had a chance to review Mr. Mendoza's comments that he issued today. Unfortunately, we just got some out today. There's eighteen comments. I, I characterize them as fairly minor, although there are some things to. To address, so I don't know if they had a chance to look at those.
We have and, and agreed that the majority of them are relatively minor. Mr. Mendoza is looking for us to add some notes here and there, specific to some financial guarantees. He's also looking for a couple of added details relative to the sidewalk construction and the. The proposed two-minute walk that's gonna go between the remote parking area and the rear of our building. We do not see any concern with addressing these comments and we can certainly put those as a condition of approval. I did note that. And as the chairman had stated, that the roadway was paved in November, so we will need to. Update how our utilities are crossed because we will need to deal with that moratorium. We're familiar with that. We had to address that when we were before the board a few years ago for. The other project over on Temple Street, so we are aware of sort of how that works.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, I have two questions. With the loading area that you mentioned earlier in your presentation, is that where tenants will. Load and unload if they're moving in or moving out? Is that the same location?
That location could be used for that as well. I could leave it up to Chris Lazott, the architect. I'm not sure of the general placement of if they have designated freight elevators for moving. But Chris may be able to elaborate more on that.
Yes, yeah, there's only one elevator in a building. It is a freight elevator in size. It's actually close to the main entrance, so it's not at that loading zone. At the low through the main entrance, which is actually a set of double doors, so that would actually be more advantageous for loading in that area.
Thanks, Chris. Can you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Chris Lazott. I work for Procon LLC. We're both the architect and the general contractor and we're located at thirteen fifty-nine Hooksit Road in Hooksit, New Hampshire.
Thanks, Chris. Mr. Peterson, did you have additional about?
Yes, my second question is, what is the plan for trash removal from this site?
Yeah, I think I can probably address that too. We actually have an internal trash room, an internal trash chute. Internal trash compactor. Basically, on a sort of regular basis, that will be pulled out of the building and the trash truck will in fact use that loading zone that Mike mentioned.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant by the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Mr. Ballinger.
Just for, for clarification with respect to the moratorium. If someone could just provide a little bit of context as to what the options are there. I, I think it's either going to the Board of Public Works for a waiver or it's coming back and asking for an extension and I, I just. I, I could be misspoken on that, but I, I'm just trying to refresh my own memory on, on how the moratorium affects. Working in the pavement and how it may affect this application.
Mr. Chair, yeah. So yeah, Mr. Ballinger is correct. The, the cutting of the pavement, if it's within five years of paving, requires Board of Public Works approval, waiver to allow that. There are additional restoration requirements required, which includes not only doing the normal cutbacks and. Trench repaving, but, but an additional mill and overlay of the pavement twenty feet beyond to the. The excavation, so there are, there are additional requirements required. The other option, I suppose, as you said, would be to delay the project till the mordrum expires, but as, as, as we just paid this last year, I'm assuming that's not. Not a desired option.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson, Mr. Chair, just, just a quick follow-up. Again, procedurally, and I apologize for not knowing all the ins and outs here, but. Is there any further action required from this board after the Board of Public Works takes an action or? I'm, I'm just trying to understand, maybe it would be helpful for the applicant as well to know the general timeframe and procedurally what we need to, to occur. Even though at least I think one member of the team has stated they've been through the process before.
Sure, so the, there's, there would be no additional action by the, this board. Conditional approval will be satisfactory for completion by this board. The Board of Public Works generally meets once a month, towards the end of the month. The application for a waiver requires a letter from the applicant as well as a description of what the proposed work is. And then that will get agendized with Board of Public Works to review and act on.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson, for, for that explanation, greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all I have, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Weber?
Yes, you guys, Dan did mention the. Mandela had some. Comments that needed to be approved, you know, done, so what is the date on that?
That's today's date, May twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Matt, could you, or Linda, maybe clarified, did the prior conditions have a stipulation regarding. Comments from the city and should we just amend? Stipulation number one to include a new date or something?
Stipulation number one has all prior conditions of approval are incorporated herein. Unless it's preceded by a new condition. On the original approval on August eighth, one of the conditions of approval was comments from Joe Mandola dated. July nineteenth, twenty nineteen. Comments that we receive today would replace those.
Okay, so we're kind of covered by the item number one? Okay, good, so we wouldn't need to add it necessarily. Okay. Any other questions of staff or the board, or staff or the applicant by the board? Okay, hearing none, I'll go ahead and open to the public. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned of the plan or have a question of the plan? Yes, so go ahead and unmute and state your name and address for a record.
Yes, I would like to make, make some comments. Thank you for taking your time. Amazing your people stay up so late. The, I'm Bob Dion, four-four-seven Main Dunstable Road in Nashua. And I'm the abutter, the owner of the abutting property at one-oh-two East Hollis Street. We have. Building, and by the way, back in two thousand nineteen, I was in support of, of, of the plans at that time. We did have some concerns, or I did have some concerns about the. Abutting fence and the planning board helped me, you know, work that through. To make sure that the abutting fence was not brought any closer to my property, which would have. Caused a problem on access out of the emergency access doors. So that was great. Thank you for, for helping me on that. Now, at this point, I'm, I'm speaking in opposition for the additional parking spaces. To add eight additional spaces. We have, our building was built in the early nineteen hundreds and. Today, it probably wouldn't be acceptable, but it was back then and it only has three to four feet. Of space between the building and the budget rental car property on our. On our west side. Now, that is where the, it's supposed to be now a twenty-foot. Right-of-way for these people, the thirteen cars that are gonna be parked in the back of my property to be able to drive through that area. Right now, I do have a fourteen-foot right-of-way to be able to get. Our vehicles into the back of the property for parking. So great, that's worked out well and Budget's been very good about that. Now, with the thirteen people, thirteen cars that are gonna be in the back, we're gonna have traffic going right through. Within three feet of my building. Where there's one of the, the rare apartment. Has a, has an access door, the only door that they have. Going right to there, it's three feet from that right-of-way. So they're gonna open the door, open the screen door, and they're gonna be, the people will be right. In that right-of-way where you have thirteen cars, in addition to our three cars. Going up and down access to that area. So my, what my concern is, is obviously safety for the children and adults, anyone. That would be coming out of that door and stepping three feet right into traffic. From, from the people that are parking back there. So I would suggest that you don't approve the additional. Eight units for the sake of not having an accident or a problem. In that area for an additional thirteen parking spaces. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concerned of a question for the plan? So at this point, I would ask maybe for the applicant to I guess this would be helpful for the board as well to maybe illustrate what the abutters concern would be. I'm having a hard time visualizing it per se on my head, so could you address that for us?
I can. This is Michael from Allen and Major Associates. So if you can see.
I can see the plan.
All right, so this is the thirteen spaces that we've got provided here. This is Mr. Dion's property here.
Yep.
You can see the property line that runs down the middle. This whole area is paved. There's access for vehicles that come in and out along the side now, whether it's the budget car rental or the proposed vehicles. I know Mr. Dion has paved parking back here, which will be maintained. I'm not sure where on this. I believe the door may be in this area here.
The west side.
Yeah, so there is, I mean, it's all sort of wide-open pavement now. I'm not sure there's much we could do other than possibly providing maybe some ballards along this existing property line within the budget piece to keep people away from that area, so it would give them sort of a buffered protected area up against the building.
So they illustrated for me like, so the cars that would be parked in the back, how would they get in and out of that?
So this whole air, so they, there's several right here at this location is an existing curb cut. It's a very wide, this used to be an old gas station. So it's a very wide curb cut here. There's also a very wide curb cut here. This building is where the Budget or the Hertz does their business. So this whole area is all paved. The pavement extends all the way back up to about this location back here and wraps around the back of Mr. Dion's property. And then where we're proposing this is sort of scrub brush, so we're going to sort of increase the grade in that area. So any vehicles that Mr. Dion had would be able to still access the back through this existing curb cut here.
Yep. So that building, the existing building is essentially sitting in a sea of asphalt right now?
That is correct.
There's no striping or anything?
There's nothing out there. I mean, that could be something that we maybe could do. I mean, we have a striped island here to sort of demarcate the end of the parking or the proposed parking. Maybe it's we run that down and sort of give a demarcated a more defined travel way, maybe so to speak, for these folks here, and maybe there's some protections provided along this edge to help the protection of anybody that may be coming out of these doors on that side.
Right. Let's see for like a guard rail.
Now, if you start putting a guard rail, now you're really inhibiting any sort of pedestrian traffic that may be coming through here. At least a ballard of some sort, you could actually get in between and walk through. And I think those would, I mean, you could even get those with a plastic wrap that may look better than a big piece of guard rail in front of those doors.
Okay. Well, unless the board, if they've got any other further questions or comments about that, they can make. Everybody from the board, Mr. Weber?
Thank you. Yeah, yes, that striping, I was going to suggest, I was, it was in my mind to really beyond that door opening, have striping beyond that, whatever the door opens up, have striping like at least three foot beyond it, so that they visually can see cars if they need to, but they also don't open the door and walk right into a car that may be pulling in, so that's striping plus the ballard. You don't want to have the ballard too far out there, but at least at least wherever the door would open, at least that far away from the building, if not more. And then the striping, three-foot striping will give them a safer path to go to their cars.
I mean, I don't know if Mr. Malnaski or maybe staff can comment. Can you bring the drawing back up? Mike?
Sir?
Maybe this is really a comment for staff, but is the where's the property line for the, that's a property line right there?
So that's the property line right here.
So the building to the right is how far off the property line?
So one inch equals twenty.
Looks like it's just like a few feet.
Yeah. I apologize.
That's okay. I'm just wondering for staff, is the, is the location of that building inconsistent? Like, could it be built like that today? Is that like, is that a non-conforming lot as it stands right now because of the buffers from the property lines?
I mean, it looks pretty close to the property, and it looks like it's probably non-conforming. It's probably been there. I'm going to ask Mr. Dion. Probably been there for a while.
Yeah, yeah, I get that, yeah.
Yeah, we're about five and a half feet from the property line.
Yeah, yeah.
So that building has been there for quite some time.
Yeah. And the lot to the left, the one that you're proposing the lot on, you don't own that lot? You're just getting a?
So they are getting a it's a permanent exclusive easement.
Yeah, so it's like a use for that. Do you have any suggestions other than a ball, I mean, if you were, I mean, you're civil engineer, what's your what are your recommendations to make?
I mean, we've got, I mean, we've got five and a half feet from the property line. We could put something at least on because the applicant has had discussions with Hertz rent, rental car, so they do have authorization to be doing this work, so we could put something here, and I don't, it would not obstruct the the existing travel. You can see in this.
You can kind of see the curb cut down there.
So there's a curb here that sort of wraps and backs, it sort of dies in, there's a little bit of landscaping in this area. I think if we ran something up so that it was sort of in line with this curb, right along the property line, we could at least protect the doorway that Mr. Dion had mentioned. We'd have to simply locate, verify exactly where that location is. I believe it's in this vicinity here. We definitely want to make sure as to where that is. And we also want to make sure that we don't put anything that's going to obstruct his access to this space back here as well.
Right.
So I think there's definitely something we could do, and we can confirm with the applicant in this area to sort of protect that door.
Yeah, and then do any a better drive aisle somehow.
Yeah.
That is further away from the building. Okay. I don't know. Anybody from staff or Mr. Hudson, have any thoughts on something that we'd want to stipulate here to make this a safer situation?
Oh, I would agree, Mr. Chair, that the, you know, striping a line off of the property line and add an offset from the property line would make sense, maybe maybe three-foot offset from the property line. A ballard, you know, could be installed, and I'm not sure that's necessary. There are, looking at the street view here, there are some other items along the building. Mailboxes, some recycled bins and that sort of thing, so there is a little you know, there are a few things that provide some kind of a buffer currently.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it wouldn't be opposed to a baller, but I'm not sure it's, I'm not sure it's necessary.
Yeah.
A ballard is likely not necessary. I think striping an adequate distance from the property line would be adequate. To Mr. Hudson's comments, there's, there are several elements along that side of the building that create a natural buffer from the door exit, which is about ten feet from the rear of the building, or ten feet to the south of the rear of the building, it looks like. The volume, the speeds will be low here based on sort of the turn and, you know, where the destination is for cars. I think a striping action would be enough.
May I comment?
Yeah, you can go ahead. We don't have a big audience, so I'll take one more comment for me.
Thank you. We do have on record, on the deeds, dating back to the twenties, nineteen twenties, a right-of-way, fourteen fourteen feet, where there's no, there to be no things placed within that fourteen feet. So if you take my property and then another fourteen feet, there's not supposed to be anything placed in there, so we have full complete access to get back to our property. Just to, just to comment, you know, it's wonderful to say, well, you put, you put something in the way. But when, when the child opens the door and he's almost into the right-of-way, and this is a right-of-way for me, and it's, I don't know, it wasn't very clear as in this presentation that they are talking about a twenty-foot right-of-way here, of which fourteen feet is my right-of-way to get to the back of my property. So the child goes out of that door and steps just a few feet or two feet off, and his car is going back and forth. It's completely a safety hazard. I'm not sure if everyone understands what my concern is. Where the person was pointing out the door, the location, that is where the door location is. I think it's foolish to have a safety issue. Now, if they, if they could have gone over further over to the other street, but I know Budget doesn't own that, that property going over there. I think it's a no-brainer that thirteen spaces for an additional eighteen apartments just doesn't make sense to take the risk of children being get. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Other questions by the board on this? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant mentioned an easement for the proposed parking area. Is that something that would be recorded and established by meets and bounds? Because it seems like there's already maybe a little bit of muddying of the waters, if you will, regard to some of the property access points. And I guess my follow-up question would be beyond that. Has there been any deed research done to verify rights of way and points of access via East Hollis Street? I realize this is just sort of a secondary, you know, lot, if you will, but you have sort of a lot of different points coming together right there, and I, I just want to be sure we're clear on who has ownership, who has access. And if the applicant could talk about that a little bit, that would be appreciated.
Oh, I can answer that. So we have so there exclusive parking easements have been drafted by our office with meets and bounds, and they have been recorded at the registry for both this lot and the Temple Street lot. So Mr. LaFavor has purchased the Henry Hanger piece, but has not acquired ownership for the property that's located on Temple Street. He has acquired a permanent easement, exclusive easement for the parking. So a parking easement plan was prepared by our office and recorded to the registry to encapsulate the forty-eight spaces on Temple Street, as well as a secondary one for the thirteen spaces located at ninety-four as part of the Hertz. We are not we are still providing access unobstructed access out to East Hollis Street for the additional thirteen spaces. So there's nothing that's being proposed in there. Mr. Dion would still have his access from the rear of the building through the same shared access that was granted by the previous owners of the Hertz facility.
Thank you.
How do I talk? I can't figure it out.
Other questions by the board? I guess I have a question regarding, so these spaces that we're talking about, they're required because of the additional eight units? Is that?
They're actually not required. What we were trying to do is maintain at least the same ratio as what was previously approved, since this project is in a, the transportation overlay district. We have a maximum number versus a minimum number. So the thirteen spaces are more of a convenience for the residents versus a requirement by planning or zoning.
Right. Yeah. So it's not, so the only thing driving that, those thirteen are are a convenience, if you will, yeah.
And a marketability for
Sure.
the units. There's
Are there other options for that?
Locations of extra spaces.
Yeah.
I am unaware of that at this moment. There's speaking to at least safety, there's considerable amount of traffic that sort of with the cars moving in this area, as well as the traffic that parks in the back here that comes out. Thirteen cars in thirteen spaces is not going to generate a whole lot of trips. We, I do have Mr. Stephen Purna here, who's a traffic engineer. He could probably speak better to the actual number of movements that would be associated with that little bit of added parking in that area.
Yeah. Yeah, you could probably, I mean, I think we've got a good idea of, you know, it's not a big number, I get that, but it does appear to me to be not an optimal drive path, you know, for getting to that particular part of the site. I mean, it doesn't look good right now either, frankly. I mean, I don't, I don't think it's a good setup the way I mean, as much as those thirteen cars are, I mean, the spots that Mr. Dion has, he could run into the kids the same way anybody else could. You know, so I'm not sort of happy with the whole arrangement, including the spaces that are behind the building we're talking about, so. So I'm sort of searching for
How do I talk?
The solution. Yeah, we're still in the hearing here. Is there somebody else who has a comment? Is there a Mr. LaLiberty? Do you have a comment on this plan? We're not hearing any, so, okay.
I've got a comment on the plan. This is Michael Favor, one of the applicants.
Okay, go ahead.
So I just want to kind of bring everybody into what's happening with the budget parking lot as a whole. We also intend to make some improvements to the budget parking lot. The old gas station or gas station pump section that's shown in the map there is going to be getting demolished. So that is going to widen that entire section of the parking lot, which would alleviate some of his concerns about any safety issues with kids. You'd be able to take a little bit wider of an angle into the parking lot. In addition to that, the budget parking business is very busy. So the ingress egress of that on a daily basis is something to be a concern of as well. So we don't really think that the impact is going to be substantial compared to what has currently been going on in that situation. And regarding, just touching base on that right-of-way, we have a right-of-way along the section of the building, and then we have a permanent easement in the back section where the parking is. So we're So we're not affecting any right of way for the butter. Um, we're just simply using that same right of way to get to our permanent easement located in back.
Right. Okay. Thanks. Anybody else? We have a message from our Mr. Liberty, but I can't seem to hear him, you know, I see a chat there, but. Not hearing now, so. Okay, um, other questions by the board? Mr. Weber?
Uh, yes, as far as the striping and all of that, can we leave that? Uh, to, um, engineering for the best suitable safe. Um, avenue to go as far as number one, leaving that with the, instead of trying to make our own type of. You know, usually engineering can come up with the best plan for the safety because they're well suited for that.
I mean, it's an option. I mean, the other option is you can make them go back and figure it out and present it. Yeah, so. Um, you know, we, that's an option here. So. I mean, I, I guess, are there any more comments we want to make in the hearing? So I can go ahead and close the hearing.
I'm crying.
Go ahead and talk, yeah. Sorry, Mr. Liberty, I can hear you once in a while, but I can't hear your.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now, yes.
Okay, but my, my, my concern is that I own the property next door at ninety East Hollis Street. And my, my problem is that if they had the parking. Uh, behind the, the budget rental car, they may go through my property to get there. I'm not sure how they're going to work that to make it so that they don't go through my property.
Okay, you're at ninety East Hollis?
Yes, correct.
All right, um, Mr. Malinowski, can you show me where that ninety East Hollis is?
Can. Is that the Rapano Stone Works property, sir? It is, okay.
Yes.
All right. So. What we have. Let's see. So we actually have, this area is raised. Um, approximately four feet above the existing ground. So we have a two to one slope and a guardrail on the side. So it is completely inaccessible, um, from your property. So the only way to come in is at the existing sort of higher elevation. Um, at he, East Hollis, um, and it is completely closed off with guardrails along this edge and curbing here. So there's no way that any of these cars can either go down and get to your property. Or come up from your property to gain access to those parking spaces.
Okay, that, that is great because prior to that, uh, there were times when people would drive through my parking lot to get to the budget rental car property.
Yeah, and I believe before it's, you could see it, this was all open and it was sort of a gravelled sort of shoulder here. Um, we're taking that out and extending the, the upper level pavement to that area. So. There'll be no access down to that back piece.
Okay, because surprisingly budget actually rents that property from me, uh, to the left of that right now to park their vehicles.
In this area here, the, the sort of the gravel area closer to East Hollis, right?
Yes, correct.
All right, thanks. Um, just, thanks for the comment. We appreciate it and, um, we'll take that into account. Um, yeah. Uh, anybody else from the board want to make a comment while we're in the hearing? Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just, I would, I would note that one of the engineering comments that Joe Mandola made. Which I know the board hasn't had the benefit to see due to the, to the lateness of the issuance, but was relative to the connection. Uh, between that law and East Hall Street and just basically noting the concern that. You know, that there's some competing issues there with the, with the building entrance and access. So. Having said that, I mean, as discussed before, I think, uh. You know, as we would probably be looking for a payment stripe would be about the most we will be requesting. So if the board desire more than that, then it should be something that they should consider, consider stipulating.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Uh, anybody else from the board or? Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing on this, move into the meeting, so. Um, so anyway, the, um, the original part of the application seems pretty straightforward to me. We, uh, we've seen that a bunch of times. We've approved it once. Pretty minor changes with regard to the, um, loading dock and some of those areas seems to me. Um, I guess I'm looking for what the board thinks about this additional parking. You know, whether you're. In favor of it, you think the safety issues are. Formidable, um, want to see something addressed there? Thoughts? Mr. Weber?
Thank you. Um, I think that because, the one thing I, I think is really good to hear is that the. The gas station is going to be raised, so there's going to be plenty of area to be away from this building. And I think that the striping that, uh, Dan is talking about, Dan Hudson, is going to really. Safely, can safely impact that is, and I, you know, to, so it's safe for kids or adults with kids. Can walk out of that building and, and get to their cars. I think the same situation like. Um. Scott, you said that the cars coming out of that building that he owns could still impact somebody else coming out of that building. So I think the safe thing to do is, uh, as Dan is proposing is that they're going to put striping there. And that'll make things safe enough for everyone. That's my comment.
Others? Mr. Ball?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I, I would hate to predicate anything on the potential raising or not raising of the gas station site. Cause honestly, that, that's not something that's before us this evening. Um.
Yeah.
Uh. I guess the, the, the only issue I'm, I'm, I'm really still concerned about, um, leave testimony from, um, from Mr. Dion, the, the butter. Um, is, is, I, I believe, and I don't want to mischaracterize what, what he said, but it sounds like he sort of has. Ownership of the right of way west of his building and, and I, 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 I guess. I, I, I don't know if I heard any testimony to the contrary there and I, I, I. For thirteen parking spaces, it seems like you got a heck of a mess there, um, a- as to who owns what and. Um, ju- just to see a pavement out there, um, uh. I, I'm not sure what the right solution is and I'm, I'm, I'm struggling as to whether or not those thirteen spaces are even worth it if they're not required. Um, so, um, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Other people from the board? Thoughts, Mr. Hirsch?
Yeah, I'm, I'm concerned I'm going forward on this till we have a really clear definition as to what the driveway is going to be like there, the striping and all of the safety issues. Uh, right now it sounds like just a wild, a wide open situation here. Could, could be difficult down the road depending on the development that comes in. So I, I personally feel we should be tabling this and, uh, let them come back with a more definitive plan for what you're going to do there.
Well, some of board? Mr. Peterson?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Dion mentioned his documentation says he has fourteen feet from his building. And, uh, was that taken into account by the applicant in terms of right of way of driving across where. Uh, Mr. Diane also has access, uh, as one of the board members mentioned. You know, we need to have a better understanding as to who has the rights to this particular piece of real estate. Terms of ownership and access so that we do not create conflicts, uh, in the future.
Yeah, I mean, maybe staff can clarify, but it sounds to me like there's a. There's an access right away, which obviously two people can share. Right? I mean, as long as it's open, it's open. It doesn't matter. It's not like one person can't go on it and the other one can, they can both. But I'm, I'm sort of of the opinion that it sounds like there's some. Potential to improve the situation if the gas pumps are moving. You know, I don't know, maybe there's a better lot design more on the west side of the lot or something like that, you know, that can improve things. But, um, you know, as it stands, those thirteen spots to me seem problematic. As well, but I'm more apt to, yeah, like Mr. Hirsch, um, indicated. Give him a shot at, um, sort of cleaning it up, if you will, and dealing with the issues, dealing with the butter, dealing with the. What the, what engineering might want to see, because there was an engineering comment on it, um, and get the, get all that on the plan. If the, if the gas pumps are going to go, then the plan show that and, um, as well as, um. If there's going to be any striping and, you know, the movements in and out, I don't know, maybe one way in, one way out is a better solution, you know, for some of those things, so. Um, so that's, I'm leaning towards that. I, I think I'm on the same page as Mr. Hirsch here, that.
Mr. Weber? Yes, uh, I totally agree with the comments of, uh, Hirsch and, uh, Mr. Hirsch yourself. That's, that is a better solution.
Mr. Ball?
Uh, 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 thank you, Mr. Chair. The, the only thing I would add, I'm in, I'm in general concurrence with, with prior comments made, um. I- i- if there were some, if there were some clarity, uh, with regard to, to ownership and existing rights of way. Um, or existing easements be, because, uh, I, 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 I think, I think a half a day's worth of. Research at the registry might be worthwhile here if there are any conflicting points and I'm not, I'm not trying to. Uh, inti- intimate that that hasn't been done, but if there was some clarity brought forth on. It, it looks like the property lines are more or less pretty clearly defined, but, but rights of access may not be. And if there's anything publicly available that clarifies who can cross where and what, that, that would also be helpful. Um, if the applicant is able to come up with some sort of, um. Mitigation plan for, for lack of a better term for, for dealing with this.
Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, I, I would, uh, agree with Mr. Ballinger. I think, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I, I understand it to be a shared easement or will be when, when this additional. Permission is granted, uh, but I think it would be beneficial to show that on the plan. Um, and I think the, uh, you know, the issues can be fairly easy to address. I believe our next meeting is a couple of weeks. So if we decide to table and it could be quickly addressed, we wouldn't be delaying that get that long. Um, so yeah, if that's the, if that's the board's will, I'd be so inclined as well.
Okay. All right, seems like we have reasonable congruence on the boards. Does somebody want to make a motion on this? As we're kind of dialing into the same point here, it seems like. Uh, Mr. Sullivan, did you have a comment first?
Uh, just a, a question. Would the board be considering a motion to continue until the June third meeting to allow the applicant to come back? With a revised plan at that time rather than a month extension, just a few weeks?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, but.
I, I know that the deed research has been done, so I think it's a matter of presentation.
Yeah.
And as an adjustment for safety, yeah, yeah, two weeks.
If I can, uh, just make that comment, I can reiterate that to Mr. Sullivan's comments. So we have done the deed research. We did not see anything in the deeds. Um, I think it would be a matter of just clarifying the, the access rights and adjusting the plan. And I think the applicant would be definitely agreeable, um, if it is the flavor of the board, at least to get on to the June meeting versus. Going farther out than that, because I don't think it's going to take more than a day or so for us to, if we needed to just update the plan and add some striping in there.
Okay, thanks. All right, so somebody want to make a motion here from the board? Mr. Weber?
Yes. Um, like to table new business project. Uh, eight twenty-one dash zero zero seven one site plan to the June third. Uh, twenty twenty-one for the reasons stipulated, uh, by the board to look at the properties and. Come up with a solution with the engineering department.
All right, so we have the motion to, uh, continue this to the, um, through June meeting. Again, for the, for the intent of, uh, clarifying the sort of additional parking, dealing with any safety issues, any easement issues. Am I addressing any, uh, comments there? Do we have a, a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballinger? Uh, any further discussion by the board? Okay, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Ian Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Most of the table passes six to zero.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks. So this is for the board. Uh, I know we're getting late, but we, we'd get a few more things on the agenda. I'm not sure if anybody's, I, I would expect. Um, we'd take, um, comment or at least get into eight twenty-one dash zero zero nine one right now. Sending, I'm looking for nods here from people. I see a few, so, all right, let's keep going. So, uh, I'm going to take, uh, case eight twenty-one dash zero zero nine one Colby Enterprises LLC. Application acceptance proposed amendment to NR nineteen forty-three to allow for overhead utilities along a portion of the property. Property is located at Four Blackstone. Does anybody have a chance to, uh, take a look at this application, want to make a motion as to where you're ready to take jurisdiction?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, okay.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a, a motion, uh, to accept jurisdiction over new business site plans, case number eight two one dash zero zero nine one. Colby Enterprises LLC property located at Four Blackstone Drive.
Okay, thanks. So we have that motion to take jurisdiction of eight twenty-one dash zero zero nine one. Do we have a second?
Weber?
Second one, Mr. Weber. Any further discussion? Can we get a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Ian Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Uh, Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And most of the passes six to zero.
Okay, so do we have somebody from the applicant that wants to present this?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I know it's been a late evening and I'll try to be very brief and, uh, to the point here. Uh, my name is Chris Rice with TF Moran. I'm here on behalf of Colby Enterprises, who is the owner of, uh, Four Blackstone Drive and also the applicant. Um, if I can just share my screen, I'll bring up, uh, I have an aerial here just to show quickly, just to help situate you. So over here is Round Pond. This is Amherst Street. This is Blackstone Drive. Uh, these are the residential, uh, units back here, and this is where the, uh, Four Blackstone Drive property is right now. And that's the gas station that was recently approved and, uh, they just started construction out of the site. So those proposed plans had, uh, electrical service for the building coming underground from Amherst Street, which is still doable. However, I have recently been hired to work on Eight Blackstone Drive, which is the property behind it. And in, as I was coordinating with the power company, uh, for the start of construction for Four Blackstone Drive, I asked them. You know, when we get ready to service this lot, how are we going to do it? And they said that the only way to. Service this lot based on the existing infrastructure that's on Blackstone Drive is they would have to set up a few new service poles. And, uh, run a few overhead wires and that would most likely require some tree limbing and possibly some removal of some mature trees along Blackstone Drive here. And basically beyond this point on Blackstone Drive, it's mainly a residential, uh, accessway. Saying it's a nice street and it's got, uh, some nice vegetation. So the other option that was discussed was if we were allowed to do overhead electric from here to here. What we could do, and I'll just bring up one other plan that shows a little bit more clearly. So, you know, orange on this plan is the existing overhead wires that go up Blackstone and up and down Amherst Street. If we were allowed, uh, by waiver request to put overhead wires to here. If we were allowed, uh, by waiver request to put overhead wires to here, uh, they could set one pole here and then run underground from here to the building and then run underground from this pole to this development, and it wouldn't require any tree cutting of any kind. So, uh, we discussed it with staff and thought it was a good idea to try to request a waiver from the planning board. We thought that it was more appropriate to, uh, have an overhead line in this location that would service both developments rather than uh, potentially take down some some nice vegetation and trees further up Blackstone Drive. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. We did address the one comment by Joe Mandolo, which was to just note the utility pole is on private property.
Okay. Uh, any questions by the board for the applicant on this? Pretty straightforward, actually. Uh, not seeing anybody. Okay, if there's no questions by the board, um, I'll open it up to the audience. Is anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to this plan or have a question? Okay, not hearing any. I'll give the board one more time to uh, ask any questions of the applicant during the hearing. Not hearing any. Um, so we'll go ahead and close the hearing. Um, so we're in the meeting, um, seems pretty straightforward. Previous application, just a change to how the utilities are getting to the site, but seems like a reasonable request to me. Not sure if anybody on the board has any of the further comments on that. Yeah, okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
Weber?
Weber, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, new business project, eight twenty-one dash zero zero nine one site plan. Location for Blackstone Drive. Uh, that it meets NRO one ninety, one forty-six D. With the first, uh, the one waiver request, uh, one ninety, two twenty-one, which requires underground and utilities for new site plan is granted, finding the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and ten of the regulation. Two and three as written.
Okay, so we have that motion to approve with the stipulations as indicated by Mr. Weber. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chair?
Uh, go ahead, Linda.
Uh, stipulation number two can be deleted because we received, uh, an email from Joe Mandolo that the applicant has addressed all their com- his comments.
Okay, Mr. Weber, would you want to amend for that or?
I will amend, um, and remove, uh, two and three become two.
Thanks. So we have that amended motion by Mr. Weber. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion? Okay, let's get a vote on that.
Mike Peterson? Mr. Peterson?
He's muted right now.
Yes.
We go, yeah. Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That most of the passes six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Since that one only took about three minutes, I'm I'm gonna try to press on here with, uh, new business subdivision plan eight twenty-one dash zero zero eight nine. City of Nashville owner, application and acceptance of proposed lot line relocation plan. It's property located at L. Cherrywood Drive and L. Chokeberry Lane. So anybody had a chance to take a look at this subdivision plan and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction?
Weber?
Go ahead, Mr. Weber.
Uh, new business project eight twenty-one zero zero eight nine subdivision plan, uh, request, uh, that we take jurisdiction.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Weber to take jurisdiction. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
This, this, this may come out through the presentation, but as a general question, is it necessary for the city to do a lot line readjustment for two city-owned parcels, um? I just just procedurally and statutorily, I'm I'm not sure what the requirements are on that, um, but I'm I'm sure that would probably come to light at some point here, um, but if it if that wasn't part of the presentation, it would be helpful to to hear uh, how this came to be. So, thank you.
Great. Okay, Matt, did you want to comment on that?
Sure, yeah, yes, I'd be happy to. I know that, uh, Mr. Auger will discuss this, but it it is necessary in this case because of the restrictions on one of the two parcels as an open space parcel that was approved as part of the Maplewood Development. Uh, this modification is necessary to extinguish those open space restrictions on a portion of one of the lots that will be developed as part of a contemplated future project for new school. Uh, so again, that that modification is needed in order to remove some of those open space restrictions and allow for a recreational use to be developed as part of a future school development site.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, let's get a roll vote on the jurisdiction.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That most of the passes six to zero.
Okay, so Mr. Auger, are you presenting for this?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Um, for the record, my name is Steve Auger. I'm a project manager with Peter Swanson. And our office is located here in Nashville at three Congress Street. Um, here tonight on behalf of the Joint Special School Building Committee. Uh, and as as mentioned, we're seeking approval for a lot line relocation plan between, uh, two lots, both owned by the city of Nashville. Um, I'd like to share my screen now to, uh, help you understand what it is where we're doing.
Uh, so let me go back to the the first sheet. This is, this is kind of the overall site here where, uh, the the two lots we're dealing with. Uh, twenty-eight fifty-one right here and then twenty-eight fifty-nine right here. Uh, the rest of what you're looking at here is, um, is the Gagnon Farm subdivision, uh, which I believe, uh, we, this office did back around two thousand four, two thousand five, somewhere in in that area. Uh, quickly, some history, uh, the two lots are twenty-eight fifty-one and twenty-eight fifty-nine. Uh, the larger of the two is a little over twenty acres and twenty-eight fifty-nine is eight point two eight acres. They're both in the R forty zone, uh, with flexible use overlay district. Uh, the butters are residential homes, uh, city-owned tracts and undeveloped land on all sides. And the lots are accessed, uh, the larger lot is accessed here, has frontage at the intersection of Cherrywood and Medallion here. Uh, and the smaller of the two is access at the the chokeberry lane cul-de-sac here. Um, like to move to to the other sheet now. It's a it's a little clearer as as to what we're doing. Um, thi- this is in relation to the the pending middle school project, uh, which will be built on this, uh, the the lot I've shown in orange here, the larger the two lots. Uh, so what we're proposing to do is transfer, uh, this this hatch area in orange here is currently part of lot twenty-eight fifty-nine right now. This plan would transfer this area to this lot here, so making making the the lot line extend, uh, out to there. Um, and this hatch area totals one point six nine acres in size. And, uh, simply put, it's to allow, um, when the when the site plan for the middle school is developed, uh, which which we're, we're not doing that, that's being done by another firm, so I can't completely speak to that, um. But part of that development is fitting a a track and field facility on the site. Uh, and so with with apparently with the way the the school is going to lay out, they need a little bit more land to do that. Uh, so so that's really the purpose of the plan here is sending some, uh, land from one city-owned lot to another city-owned lot so that the track and field facility, everything can all be on the same, uh, lot that the middle school will be on. Uh, with regards to to what Mr. Sullivan had mentioned, um, uh, back when we did the the Gagnon Farm, uh, lot, i- and this is actually a note, uh, on back on on sheet one of the plan here. Uh, it's this long, uh, note right here, note number five, um. And and I I think I'll just read it quickly just to summarize it. Um, lot twenty-eight fifty-nine is an open space lot that is part of the previously approved and constructed Gagnon Farm subdivision. The Gagnon Farm was designed and approved under the flexible use overlay district criteria. The open space requirement for that subdivision was thirty percent, whereas fifty-four percent open space was provided. This lot line relocation plan transfers one point six nine acres, seventy-three thousand six hundred and three square feet of land from lot twenty-eight fifty-nine to lot twenty-eight fifty-one. The land transfer, and this is what Mr. Sullivan was getting at. The land transfer results in a reduction of the Gagnon Farm open space from fifty-four percent to fifty-two percent. So whereas thirty percent was required, we're now down to fifty-two percent. So the open space associated with the Gagnon Farm plan, we still easily conform uh, to what was approved back when the Gagnon Farm, uh, was was originally approved. Uh, we are asking for one waiver with this, uh, and that is section one ninety dash two eight two B nine. Um, and just to summarize, that is the the section that has to do with showing the existing conditions on the site and within a thousand feet of the site, um, as we've been regularly, uh, asking for that. Uh, in 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 this case, on the site, um, uh, i- it's just a land plan where we're, you know, redrawing invisible lines on the ground, so showing the existing conditions really isn't necessary. Uh, and within a thousand feet of the site, um, that that's th- that's an order that would require a significant amount of survey at a significant cost. Uh, and it really has no bearing on on what this plan proposes. Um, so, uh, as you can see, very simply, we're just transferring this piece of land here from this lot to that lot. Uh, if anyone has any questions, I will be glad to answer them.
Steve, the only question I had is just, um, and I think you answered this, there's no part of the school building going on there. This is just for fields or some other kind of relatively open space kind of concept anyway, right?
From from what I've been told is strictly to accommodate, uh, however the the track and field facility lays out. Um, you know, and those are usually, uh, you know, you've got the track and then some type of field in the middle with a, you know, hole vault and, you know, long jump box and, you know, things of that nature.
Yeah, okay. Thanks. Uh, any other questions by the board from the applicant?
Mr. Chair?
Yep, Mr. Ballinger.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, with respect to the, uh, reduction in in the common land, I I I understand that you you still meet the common land requirement, but as far as density calculations for the actual residential units that were part of the subdivision, was there any impact there is either? I'm not sure if I'm I'm asking that appropriately, but, um, sometimes the number of units are based on the number of of common lands, and, um, I just didn't know if that that two percent reduction or so would would basically create any non-conforming residential lots.
No, I I I don't believe that's, uh, the case with this, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you.
Okay. Good question. Any other questions by the board? Okay, not hearing any. I'll open it to the public. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the subdivision plan or have a question? Go ahead and unmute. Speak your name and address for the record. Okay, not hearing any. I'll give the board one more.
Uh, uh, it really from six medallion court.
Okay, go ahead.
How does this change impacts my house and my property?
Uh, can you give your address again, please?
Six medallion court.
Six medallion, okay. All right. All right, we'll have the applicant respond to that. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay. Um, Steve, maybe you can respond to that?
Um, so, so, okay, so I shared my screen just so everyone can see, uh, in courts right here. I'm not exactly sure which number is six is probably one of these.
It's a middle, middle on the street.
Right there, yeah.
Um, uh, a- again, thi- this is simply a land transfer plan, so I I I can't imagine that this has any type of, uh, you know, financial impact or in terms of, you know, devaluation or or anything like that on uh, on the house.
Yeah, so essentially the city still owns all that land and there's no difference over there, so. And it's it's not really abutting that property anyway. The 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 transferred area.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thanks. Uh, any other, anybody else in the audience, uh, wishing to speak in opposition or concern or have a question to the plan? Okay, do not hear any, so I'll go ahead and ask the board, yeah, give you one more opportunity to ask any questions of the applicant while we're in the hearing. All right, hearing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing. Move into the meeting. Uh, seems like a pretty straightforward moving, moving some boundaries around. Doesn't appear to be a a major impact on really the open space and for the most part, what's being constructed is open space as well, so. So I don't have any issues on my end. I don't know if anybody else has any comments? Doesn't look like it. Anybody want to make a motion?
Oh, whoever, go ahead. Okay, new business project eight twenty-one dash zero zero eight nine subdivision. Uh, located at L. Cherrywood Drive and L. Chokeberry Lane. Um, finding it meets subdivision NRO one ninety, one thirty-eight G. With, uh, one waiver request, uh, one ninety, two eighty-two B nine, which requires existing conditions plan is granted, finding the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and ten of the regulation.
It's with that motion by Mr. Weber to approve, um, with stipulations as indicated. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, can we get a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that most of the passes six to zero.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. All right, I think we have essentially one more item with the exception of the CIP, which will be just like a two-minute thing, so. Um, I think we should just take this and get it done with and move on to our next, so we can get to our next meeting. So next up, eight twenty-one dash zero zero ninety, this is a Dacey Family Trust owner, Dan Bergeron, Building and Development, Inc., applicant. It's an application and acceptance of proposed lot line relocation consolidation plan. This is at twenty-nine Dean Street. So anybody had a chance to take a look at this plan, want to make a motion, it's ready for jurisdiction?
Uh, Weber, I have a comment.
Yep.
I'm gonna approve it anyway, but, uh, take jurisdiction, but on our thing is, uh, it says two twenty-nine Dean, and I think it's supposed to be twenty-nine. Is that correct? Am I off base or is that?
Yeah, it's supposed to be twenty-nine Dean Street.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Ed.
Okay, so, uh, project eight twenty-one dash zero zero nine zero lot line relocation.
All right, so we have that motion to take jurisdiction by Mr. Weber. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Uh, any further discussion? All right, can we get a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
See him out there. Like you there? Can't hear him.
Mike Peterson?
He just logged back in. I'm not sure.
All right, we'll keep going to how far we get.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson, are you there? Well, that motion passes five to zero.
Okay, so we got jurisdiction. Thanks.
Oh, Michael Peterson says yes.
Okay, so we got it. Yeah. Alright, so we've got jurisdiction of this. Do we have uh somebody from the applicant that wants to present this? Are we gonna lose them?
I'm here.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Richard May and a licensed professional engineer with May and Parkhead Engineering, representing the applicant, Dan Bergeron, and their property owners, Dacey Family Trust. Apostle of concern is three existing lots of record at twenty nine Dane Street in the RA zone. The purpose tonight is to convert the three lots and the old right-of-way into two lots. On March twenty third, the ZBA granted, not with variances of seventy five feet required versus sixty one point eight four and sixty point two two proposed uh and existing. The final two lots after all the lot line relocations will be ten thousand five hundred seventy six square feet and ten thousand four hundred fifty six square feet versus a seventy five hundred square feet required in the RA zone. The existing house will be raised. Two waivers have been requested, existing conditions within a thousand feet and underground utilities. The stip- population such suggested and are acceptable and memo is dated today and I got it this afternoon sometime, so. When you get to that stip, thank you. I'm done.
Okay, thank you. That's good. Um, okay, so so I've had a chance to look at this, so it it looks like, just clarify for me, Mr. May, and so the existing lots, they were um there was three and one was kind of in the back of the site.
One in front and one in the across the back.
Yeah, and the one across the back was really not accessible very well. Now with the two lots.
No, it has no, had no legal frontage.
Right, so this kind of makes these considerably more conforming and useful, that's what it looks like to me, so.
Yes, very true.
Uh, that was the only question I had. Does anybody else have any questions for the applicant on this? Let's see, okay. I'm not sure if there's anybody in the audience, but I will open it up in the audience. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition or concern or have a question of the plan? Not seeing any. Any further questions by the board? Mr. Weber?
Yes, number five.
Yeah?
We just received comments today, so it will be dated May twentieth.
Thank you.
Alright, any further questions by the board in the hearing? Good, hearing none. I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing, move to the meeting. Seems pretty straightforward. Seems like a pretty good use of the lot, actually, because before the that, like I said, the other uh lot was essentially landlocked in there. Now this seems like it's more useful. So I'm in favor of it. Anybody else have any comments? Yeah, anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Weber, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, new business project, uh, eight twenty one dash zero zero nine zero lot line uh relocation plan at twenty nine Dane Street, uh, finding the subdivision meets the uh requirements outlined in some the subdivision NRO one ninety, one thirty eight G. With two um waiver requests, uh, first is one ninety, two eighty two B nine, which requires existing conditions plan is granted, following the the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and ten of the regulation. The second waiver is one ninety, two twenty one C, which requires underground utilities for a new subdivision plan is granted, finding the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and ten of the regulation. Three and four is written, five dated May twentieth, twenty twenty one. Uh, six through ten as written.
Actually, that motion to approve with the stipulations as indicated by Mr. Weber, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? Alright, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Got Leclair?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
That motion passes six to zero.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you. Appreciate your waiting.
Second time in a row.
Well, we got to end.
So we have two items quickly left here. Um, we have the review of the tentative agenda. Is anybody had a chance to take a look at that? I want to make a motion as to whether there's any items of uh regional impact. I don't see any on there, haven't looked at it, but. Someone want to make, Mr. Ballinger?
Uh, Mr. Chair, yes, I'd like to make a motion that there are no projects of regional impact based on the May seventeenth, twenty twenty one Technical Review Committee meeting.
Alright, so that motion for no proposals of regional impact for Mr. Ballinger, do we have a second on it?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? Alright, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Got Leclair?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
And motion passes six to zero.
Okay, and I think the only other thing we have left is just uh to address the uh amendment to the capital improvement program. You can probably just discuss that. That was from a meeting today that we had.
Sure, happy to, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I did include a memo in the supplemental materials that went out to the board yesterday relative to a request to have an amended recommendation for the FY twenty twenty two Capital Improvement Plan or CIP. Uh, two supplemental projects were submitted for the CIC's review and approval. The CIC met this evening at six P M. and favorably recommended both projects, in fact, with a maximum score uh in this case of twenty eight points, which is the highest ranking of an A one. Uh, the two projects that were considered were the Spruce Street Multi-Use Trail Connection Project, which is a really a a project that connects the planned Riverwalk improvements with the planned Heritage Rail Trail East project. Uh, the total project cost is one point two five million, but involves a Transportation Alternatives Program grant, and the city's required match for the project is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which was the amount that was actually programmed and considered by the CIC for, again, their twenty eight point or A one ranking. The second project was the Mines Fall, uh, Mines Falls Gateway Project, which you actually heard as part of one of the referral items tonight, a little bit about, in the dog park at lot seventy seven slash five. The purchase price for that is three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, and obviously it's part of a larger effort to revitalize and reform the gateway into the park as it exists today. And again, that project was also unanimously recommended with a, an A one ranking, which is the highest score. And as a result, Mr. Chair, members of the board, we respectfully request that the planning board make a motion to uh amend or recommend the FY twenty twenty two Capital Improvement Plan, uh, subject to the amendments presented this evening, May twentieth, twenty twenty one. After such time, of course, the plan will be provided to the Board of Alderman for their uh review. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, yeah, and then just, I I sit on the Capital Improvements Committee and just to, I think, yeah, both of those were pretty positive. And again, when we saw today, it was that little triangle piece of land that uh was at the head of the the sort of trail into Mines Falls, and then the other one was really a connector that needs to take place between the two trails, by the one by the river and and um, so the other one going through uh town. So I would recommend, you know, that we uh we do accept this amendment as well, so. Yeah, anybody want to make a motion on this? I guess the motion would be just just uh as as written, kind of in number six there, so. Somebody on there?
I don't have the the information, so I wouldn't be able to.
Well, I can make the motion, actually, because I sit on the committee anyway, so so the motion I'll make is is to that we accept the amended FY twenty twenty two Capital Improvement Program with the proposed uh two new items that were um rated today, one by the uh Capital Improvement Subcommittee, so.
Can I make a discussion thing just before I second?
Uh, let's second, then discuss, yeah.
Second, I second.
Okay, the second by Mr. Weber. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, the only question is, uh, part of the um Nashville Regional Planning Commission, they have a GSI, and I was wondering if this uh rail trail gets uh put uh noticed to NRPC so that they can put it on their trail. Gee, uh, GSI, I think it is, they have a huge trail thing, so that's a question.
Yeah.
Sure, I'm happy to answer that, Mr. Chair, if you'd like me to.
Yeah, sure.
So the NRPC is is very aware of the proposed project. And I cannot speak to whether it will be incorporated into their GIS layer or GIS viewers online, Mr. Weber. Uh, but they start, again, they certainly are aware of the proposed project, and we'd be happy to follow up with them and see whether a project of that type would be integrated into what specific transportation map online. Um, I'm not, I'm not clear on which one that would be, but I can certainly get you an answer.
I will, at the next NRPC meeting that I'll be attending, I'll ask the question.
Sure.
Okay, thanks. Uh, any other discussion? Alright, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Got Leclair?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Stane.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes five to zero with one abstent.
Great. Alright, thanks, everybody. I appreciate the uh all of your work so far tonight. We definitely cleared our plate of a lot of uh items, and uh we'll make it easier going forward, so I understand the long night, but uh anybody have any other discussion items?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I I appreciate, thank you. I appreciate the lateness of the hour, so I will be very, very quick. Uh, uh, first of all, I I I do want to thank Chris. Chris sent out a notice a few weeks ago or last month about the uh spring zoning um planning and zoning conference. There's a planning board session I got to attend. Um, so thank you for getting that notice out. Um, I certainly appreciate the staff. Uh, they were able to send out the agenda for tonight's meeting very far in advance, even if it, something changed, just having some idea of exactly what the queue is as as we approach these, because we've had some long ones recently, so. Um, it's nice to at least see what what we can expect. Again, even if it comes out with a big draft stamp on it, that's, it's great to see that early. Um, the landing project, um I don't know how how good the materials that we got for the original presentation are, and I I don't know if we're gonna need to see additional information in our our packets, or if we just keep referring back to the original, so I'll 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 plant that seed. Um, a- and the last one, uh, and I I don't want to harp on it too much, it's just, it it caught me a little bit off guard tonight with New Hampshire DOT and Controlled Access Right-of-Way. Um, it's one of the few times I've heard of it ever i- in a compact area. Um, and I'm just thinking out loud about uh not just uh Amber Street one oh one A, you've got one eleven, one eleven A, a section of Route three where where there was federal dollars spent on a bunch of these roads decades and decades and decades ago. And I'm just uh confused as to what level of involvement the state still has in those sections, which again are traditionally referred to as compact, where the state doesn't really do any maintenance uh responsibilities or or continued improvements. Um, so.
Yeah.
Um, that's, that's it, and I I apologize, I'm not trying not to push it out any longer, but uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Alright, thanks. Anybody else have any comments?
I had, I have one brief comment that I hope will not spark debate and discussion in a late hour, but uh I just, I just want to make everyone aware that obviously we, you know, that we see the world changing around us from a public health perspective fairly rapidly. Uh, we see restrictions being lifted, you know, pretty much in every aspect of our daily lives, and I just want to prepare board members for the eventuality of having a discussion about return to in-person meetings. Uh, we don't know exactly what that will look like yet. Uh, but we do anticipate that sometime in the next, potentially even months, uh, we will be returning to some form of an in-person meeting or hybrid meeting. Uh, we will try to communicate as as sort of actively as we possibly can as those two conditions change. Certainly, Sarah's been keeping us in the loop as much as possible as well on the changing conditions, even in City Hall. Um, there may be even conflicting guidance at times as far as what we're doing, but we're gonna try to deliver at least a consistent message, so please do. I will try to update you as regularly as possible, but uh please just do prepare for that eventuality, and and of course, feel comfortable reaching out if you're concerned about attendance in person, and we're happy to discuss that, what options might be available, but we do feel that potentially the the decision will be taken out of our hands by the repeal, the existing executive orders. And so we may be forced to sort of, I think, quickly on our feet and and come up with a plan to accommodate all of you and hopefully keep regular business going. Um, so I just want to prepare everyone for that, and again, thank you for your time this evening with a long agenda.
Okay, thanks. Okay, uh, anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to re- to get a leave to adjourn.
So we don't need a second on that. Let's uh get a roll vote, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Claire?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
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 This is passes six to zero.
Alright, so we're adjourned at eleven twenty six.